Like to call to order the April tenth meeting of the Clive City Council with the clerk, please call room.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
House members Weaver, Eric McCoy, here, Kalani, here, Judkins.
Here.
Klein, here.
Very good. Would you all rise and join us in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we move to our regular items on the agenda, we wanted to pause for a moment to acknowledge the loss we had.
Thank you, Your Honor. At your last council meeting, you had Westcom Chief Udell Mantola before you giving an update on Westcom. Unfortunately, two days later, Udell passed away. And so I wanted to take a moment for this loss for the Westcom family, for Clive family. I've served on the Westcom Management Committee since I've been city manager and got into as a part of recruiting Udell to that position. So I wanted to take a moment here tonight, some moment of silence to recognize that loss.
Let's observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you all for your thoughts. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any change.
Approval.
Okay. Motion second to approve the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. The agenda is approved. Next, we have our citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. While Pete checks to see if there's anyone online, I'll remind everyone here that Clive supports the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Everything we do, expect everyone in the chambers to act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Pete, do we have anyone online?
No, Your Honor.
And do we have anyone in the chambers to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Starr, would you come forward, identify yourself for the record, and tell us what you'd like to address this with?
Thanks, everybody. Lila Starr, sixteen fourteen Northwest Ninety-Ninth Court in Clive. Just wanted to share this evening that, you know, the citizens now have been made aware that there's an opening coming up on the council. And we're going to miss Shrikan a great deal. And we want to let you know that the last time there was an opening, we did a petition drive to get a special election. And some of us are a little disappointed that you didn't choose to do this by special election without, you know, scheduling an appointment again. So we were hoping, I think, that the previous message would have been well received and you would understand that we would, going forward, like to have the citizens have a voice in how their city council representatives are selected. So it looks like we may be gearing up to do another petition. We hope you'll get, hear our message if we do this again. Because it'd be nice if we didn't, you know, if we could get to a place where we could fill our seats by letting the citizens weigh in on it. So that's what I wanted to share. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Appreciate your thoughts. I'm perhaps someone who can give some historical context and perspective. Generally speaking, when there's less than a year left on a term, the council has generally gone to a point, the position because of the cost of a special election at that point. And then at the, they only serve until the next election. And so then at that opportunity, anyone has the opportunity to run. So that's been the rationale for the past councils.
So even anyone who gets appointed, they will have to run again in November. That's no doubt.
So there's just a few months. Not my understanding from the county auditor.
We have legal opinion that shows that the, oh. I don't want to speak for legal counsel, because you wrote the memo, so I'll let you answer.
Based on the timing, the individual would only serve until the November election. And then at that point, then someone would have the opportunity to, we'd have someone to then fill the rest of the term following the November election.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm not being clear. If there is a special election, it is my understanding the person would fill out the remainder of the term, which is two and a half years.
But if the council points someone here, that person will only serve.
I'm on the same page with you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move to, yes, sir.
Kim Robinson, one four oh five two.
Why don't you come up so you can be heard?
Do I get a spotlight on me too?
Absolutely.
Just helps with the video recording, because you can hear your voice.
Don't worry, the police are listening to me all the time anyway. To Lila's point, we've seen that discussed this. We think that all seats should be filled by, by election. And if we do a special election now to fill out the rest of your term, that that person would then would take, would not have to run for reelection in November. Maybe they're still the end.
But there's additional costs to having a second election. All the tax groups have to cover. And there's not as much of a turnout, a special election, as opposed to if we do it in November, where citizens will have the voice heard because they get a vote, or whoever runs.
But all seats are filled by election. And it's only the one that, when somebody leaves for either another job or health or whatever reason, that you then appoint.
For a short, short time, seven months, six, seven months, and then it'll be an election.
And if it's more than a year, then you won't elect, then it isn't election. Is that right?
Right.
Good. I wanted that clear. Thank you.
But are you still asking for a special election?
Yeah, I am actually. I am. I think it's only right. I think that that's what we're establishing now is that the people want to vote. Yes, it does cost more money. It's true.
And they will get to vote in November where there's a bigger turnout.
And whoever's appointed, they want to leg up on whoever's running because I'm already be there.
Oh, that's crazy.
It's true. They might do a lot of you doing.
Or they could do a good job and still lose the election.
Man, it's true. Thank you.
Just for my curiosity, like, do we have final numbers from the last time?
We do. We can, we can see we sort them, look them up on our, we don't have them readily available. We can do some searching and get you an answer.
Be helpful, no, I think.
On the counts.
I'll just say, it really did matter to me. It was just a matter of a couple of months until people have to file to run. That's September. So it's really even less until people have the chance to really evaluate who it is. They want to support, so I'm very much in favor of continuing with the point of process.
Very good.
What, that's where this discussion, can we, can we read? The special, or the bigger election is still going to be somewhat of a special election, right? My understanding is the box is underneath the regular council. If I were to rerun, I would be the separate box with Eric and, and then there would be another dropdown box that does just special election piece on its own, right? So you're not all the same.
Right. So we'd have two terms that are being filled for full terms as of November. And then the one that would be the completion of the existing term. And so, yes, you could separate those two for full terms from the one that is just filling the remainder of the term. The affidavit that the candidates need to fill out by September in that case, they have to declare whether they're running for a full four-year term or to fill the vacancy, the remaining term of the vacant term. And then that will be a separate box on the ballot for that. So you could have a scenario where, for example, Councilman Klein, Councilman McCoy, for your term, and you could have a whole nother set of different candidates on the vacancy term, and they have to pick one or the other. They cannot pick both on their affidavit.
Can I clarify?
Thank you.
Seeing no other hands go up, I think we're ready to move into our presentation from West Moonee Community School District. Dr. Adams.
I've actually brought some friends who would pay us watch.
Yeah, we see that. So.
Because he's kind of bringing that up here, doing, handling the remote control here. This was, we put on in our show every spring. This happened just a couple of weeks ago. So wonderful to see our kids get involved and, and enjoying that. You know, how, how I kind of wanted to start this is say thank you, you know, I, I knew this kind of your last night because I think April eleventh was kind of, and I just think about our elected officials. So, so Matt McQuillan and I, and I love this guy, we get together on a very regular basis. We have a regular cadence. We have ever since I became superintendent, and we talk about our elected officials. We're proud of them. I've got four elected officials. That just tells you how my board shows up. They're, they're always showing up for our kids and they're showing up for our community. So Fanette Elliott is in the back. Thank you so much. And Lila Starr, and I've also brought my president, Anadalia Morgan, and my vice president, Elizabeth Larson. And so we're proud of what we're doing in West Moonee schools. We just wanted to spend a little time with you tonight, kind of share with you some celebrations and, and some challenges. And just to kind of let you know what's, what's going on. I'm real proud of the, the relationship that we've actually started with you. Michael, I get to spend some time with you. We come to.
Sorry.
Yeah. You know.
Mayor's gonna plug in now.
Absolutely. But, you know, I think there is so much opportunity for, for the city of Clive and the West Moonee Community School District to partner on some things because we're all serving the same community. And so those are the kinds of conversations we've been having. We're going to continue to have, and we're going to find some wins. And we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight as we go along.
We realize we have a time limit, but as I was, we made sure that we took some notes to, to be able to stay on, on schedule. My name is Anadalia Morgan. Actually, the Iowa Air National Guard brought us to this area. And when we were researching, we thought, gosh, this West Moonee district really seems great. And so that's why we decided to move to this area and, and chose West Moonee. I think as, as Dr. Adams mentioned, we have a very committed board, right? We're just like, this is a great school. We want to see, we want to see all the kids succeed. And what can we do to make sure that we're, that all our things are aligning? And part of what we realized after having new leadership, because Dr. Adams came on a year after I was serving on the board, we recognized the importance of developing a strategic plan and including all our community as part of it. And so we wanted to make sure that all our students and all the decisions that we're making are for their success. And whatever the success may be, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing. But how do we make sure that we're consistently aligning? And that is the question now at the board table consistently. How does that align to a strategic goals? He has always a lot of, a lot on his plate to answer those questions.
So, no, I'm not doing very good with this, Pete.
Technology.
Just clicking again. Right. There you go. Oh, that's, that's the left one.
Your other right.
Yeah, by the way. So I tell you what, we engage in a strategic planning process. And I think what I really appreciated about is we anchored to what's going on in the classroom. So kind of the, the thought was from the classroom to the board table. What were the desired daily experiences that our students wanted to experience? That our staff wanted to experience, and quite frankly, what our parents wanted to experience. That's where we anchored back. We heard loud and clear from the parents, they want to know what's going on with their child. They want to, they want to make sure that they're safe and cared for and feel welcome in their school. Students wanted the same thing as well as the teachers. So that's, that was our anchor point. We started in December. We kind of brought, I called the who's who, the folks that have been with us for, since the seventies. So what was, you know, what was the history? Where has West Moonee Community Schools been? And you kind of got to decide, okay, where are you, where are you going? And so I don't want to belabor the point, but from December twelfth in two thousand twenty-three, we kind of went on this journey where we kept anchoring back to those desired daily experiences. We put an operational plan together. We put a strategic roadmap that we're just going to unpack a little bit for you tonight. And then the board approved it in October. And all of our conversations at the board table and our conversations in the building, go back to what is the strategic plan saying? What are those strategic directions that we've identified? There's five of them. They're going to get us to the kind of outcomes that we're looking for, for our students. And so that's, that's been a fun journey. We've done that together. And as I say, it's go time. We, we've got our map and now, and now it's execution. So. I do, I want to, I wanted an opportunity to unpack the mission and then I think I turn it over to Elizabeth. We were very deliberate about this. Educate, empower, and inspire lifelong learners. We're, I, I, there's two things that were, that were really near and dear to my heart. The first is empower. So I think about, as you run, as you run a city, as we run a school district, we've got to empower our people. So important. And that's not, it's a, you know, turning over, turning over power, turning over responsibility to the classroom teacher and at the building level and let the buildings run their buildings. And then we support, we're kind of, I call it AAA service. So we do preventative maintenance, right? We do the oil changes and the tire rotations to keep the vehicle running, running right. And then we also provide roadside assistance. When you have a flat tire, we get out there and we fix it as well. So that's kind of how I approach my work is let's be preventative and build capacity and, and have things come in in the, in the, in the buildings. But at the same time, provide roadside assistance when needed. And then the second thing I wanted to point out is that lifelong learner piece. We were very deliberate. It didn't say and inspire students. We said lifelong learners. I am not the superintendent I want to be. I, Michael, I'm still chasing that. And I, and I'm probably going to chase that long after I retire. And so really believing in continuous improvement, really believing in, in just improving our craft and what we do, that includes all of us. So we said that about from the board table all the way down. Everybody is a lifelong learner. And so educating, empowering, inspiring them was very important to us. So our mission was, was very, very deliberate. And so we're, and we're executing on that.
So if you do preventative maintenance and roadside, will you tow?
We will tow. I'll tell you what, Michael, this is why I say, consider services, say yes, then make yes happen. Absolutely. You call twenty-four seven.
There we go. Okay, so part of our strategic plan was creating and identifying our district vision and asking what do we intend to create? So two of the important things here is maintaining West Moonee Community Schools academic excellence. I think we have a long history of academic excellence and we want to make sure we maintain the high standards that we have set for our students and our teachers in the past years and continue that forward. And also focusing on the robust growth opportunities and pathways for students and staff. You know, well, okay, we're going to talk about it later, so I'm not supposed to talk about it now. But you'll hear a little bit more about what we're doing to kind of expand the opportunities that we have for our, our students. And also keeping in mind for staff that, you know, we really believe in lifelong learning as a district. And so while we have ideas about where we want our students to, how we want our students to learn and where we want them to end up, we also want to provide opportunities for our staff to continue learning and engaging in their craft. Also, fiscal responsibility and sustainability is important to maintaining the district, and we'll talk about that later.
You're going to, you're going to hear about that a lot in life. So.
There we go. And so we kind, our driver of our words, right, our core values, equitable access, evidence-based and personalized instruction. We're going to be spending a little more time on meaningful collaborative relationships. So I wanted to highlight that. And thinking about how we engage with our community, we've, we've been really blessed to, again, have Dr. Adams has really gone above and beyond in making sure that he's making the connections with our community to see how we can work together in making better, in improving our district overall. And so that's it.
Hi, that's good.
Yeah.
So, you know, how are we investing in those, in those robust growth opportunities and pathways? We put a twenty-eight million dollar addition on Valley Southwoods. And I tell you what, if, if you want a tour, come up and get a tour. We have so many career and technical education opportunities for our students from, from welding to, to manufacturing to construction. It's, it's unbelievable opportunity. You know, we've had to shift our paradigm a little bit. We, we know that not everybody is going to go to a four-year college. And that's, and that's great that not everybody wants to go to a four-year college. And my son's a licensed electrician. Students are going into the military, right Ted? They're, 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 they're going right to the job market. They're, you know, they're going to four years, two years careers, relationship with DMAC. There's so many opportunities and different ways that pathways to, to get, to get to that career. And so that investment has been absolutely huge for us. And definitely kind of a, kind of a, a gem in, in the crown. So.
Okay, so this is our new CTE expansion that you mentioned at Valley Southwoods. We have, we heard from the community, it was several years ago, in fact, before all of us.
Yeah.
Were at West Moonee Community Schools in a board or a superintendent capacity. But I know that our school board and our current super, or our previous superintendent, they heard from companies and businesses in the community about how we are missing opportunities for our kids and also heard from parents about how, listen, you know, Valley has this great history of academic excellence. But what if my kid doesn't want to go to college? What, you know, what are their options? And so they identified kind of an area where we needed to grow and added this expansion, which, you know, it gives options for students and welding. We have culinary. Culinary, I wanted to say, I want to say woodworking, but there's a better word for it.
Construction.
Construction. And just, there are so many neat opportunities for students that, you know, that we didn't have available before. And we're making available now. So kids can do what really interests them and can take, they have opportunities for internships and to get certified in these before even leaving high school. It really helps them to step into the working world a step ahead of other schools.
Our, our number of internships and our number of apprenticeships are just going through the rough. We're making connections. Shane Scott, he's the, he's the director of secondary curriculum. He's making all kinds of connections, business connections, bringing them in. I will tell you when John Deere, you know, because you got to break a little paradigm there too, you know, eighteen years, kids less, you know, younger than eighteen, working with equipment. They were a little eh, but the one minute we got John Deere, everybody, oh, John Deere's doing that? Okay, we want to do that. And so really started to, to get a lot of connection. I did want to, I did want to share, I'm trying, well, I'm trying to manage our time because we love, we love to, proud of our school district. But I do want to tell you about this, you see the, the T marker. So I want to talk about how real world this can become. So our, one of our golf coaches emails me, just emails me out of the blue and says, hey, look at this, and shows me a picture of a T marker that was at a, a golf tournament they were at. And it was aimed to community school. He said, boy, that would really be cool if we had T markers at our next tournament. And I said, when is it? This weekend. Okay. So we got the artwork up. We got the T markers made. The kids made the T markers. Learned how to use the powder coat machine that day, powder coated them, and they were at the golf course that weekend. And so just that connection, just that connection, that authentic learning opportunity that, that happened in one of our schools and supporting our golf team. That's, that's the kinds of experiences we want to have for our kids. So. So let's talk a little bit about growth real quick. So, you know, more than eighty percent of our two thousand nineteen high school graduates completed at least one CTE course. In the fall of two thousand twenty-four, fifty-eight percent of the students in nine twelve were enrolled in at least one CTE course. That's a fifteen percent increase from, from the, the prior year. Students are seeing that. We did a tour the other day and we had some during our PSYAC. And some students said, I didn't, I didn't know this existed. And so we're, we're trying to work hard. You'll see a quick, short video here in a few seconds. Trying to work hard to get the message out. So I don't want to hear things like, if you don't have an older brother or sister, you don't know these things exist. So we need to be talking to our kids at the middle school level. Hey, there's these other pathways that, that might interest you. So very important to do that. I think that that's.
We may run into a little bit of technical difficulty here because of the need to.
You'll be, and I try.
Recording. Yeah, if you, if you'd like, I can take the link and I can share that.
And we can share with the council.
Oh, perfect. Sure. Yeah. So this, this is just, we're, we're really working hard at creating messaging and marketing to let students know about these opportunities. So it's, it's well done. Our communication department has done a great job with that.
So.
I'll shoot. Hold on, do it again. I don't know.
Now we're going to watch all the videos that we have. Well, I can talk about this without this slide. We wanted to just share a little bit about what we've done to improve facilities in the, within the Clive boundaries. So Crestview Elementary School, we've, if you've driven past it at all, the last few years, there's been quite a bit of work done there. This is of course showing the new entrance that we have there. We made a commitment to putting secure entrances in all of our buildings so that, you know, just for safety reasons. So this is our new secure entrance. Now nobody can gain access to the building without going through the, being buzzed in through the office.
If you want to just kind of skip.
Also, you'll see the new art room there. Part of the priorities when looking at how to redo some of the space we had was to make sure we're including natural light and access to natural light and also having flexible space so that we could use the space in many ways. And we didn't have like, well, this is the classroom. We can only use it for this. And so you can see the tables there have wheels on them. The chairs are easy to move around and that room can really be moved and morphed into whatever we may need. Also on the right, you can see about preschool. So at Crestview, the preschool classrooms prior to the renovation were just in regular classrooms, which our preschool classrooms have some extra stuff like a bathroom that is accessible. And they have extra space for in-classroom cubbies versus out-of-classroom lockers that our other rooms use. And so adding that additional space and making specialized preschool rooms really helped us better serve that population. Also, this is a beautiful new preschool playground. You'll notice there's no mud. My, my kids went to preschool at Crestview and my shoes got muddy going to the playground. So I'm really excited to see there's no mud. But also we have some handicap accessible equipment for our students that maybe have mobility issues. And then the new cafeteria is a larger space to serve the, the growth that we've had at the school and more adequate for the modern lunch service that we have now. It's different than it was when school was first built. Also, we have some space that we're hoping to do wraparound preschool with. Now, it's a need we've heard from families is that, hey, we cannot stop by at eleven forty to pick up our kid from preschool, you know? So we really need the addition of a wraparound daycare for our kids in order to have access to preschool. So we have some space in mind for that. And again, that's another classroom space. We have the tables instead of traditional desks and chairs and all that stuff is really easy to move around and kind of make the room whatever we need it to be.
And I, I think the significance of that is our facilities are used, I feel like, twenty-four seven. One or the other, and I don't want to get too far ahead, but one of the, one of the things that Matt and I identified is maybe what we do through community ed and facility use and what you do through Parks and Rec, we've already brought those folks together and had conversations in what, the last month, I think, Matt? So, you know, just trying to, you know, these facilities are the public's facilities. And so, you know, renting out the library and renting out some of these spaces, the citizens of Clive, it's available. And so to have the kind of space to execute on, on the, on the education part of it, but also spaces for our community to use is fantastic. So. So I tell you what, I started saying this when I first got here. I've been saying it for three years. You belong here. I'm, I'm going to unpack it three different ways. Not, you belong here, meaning get in front of our great teachers. We have great faculty and staff. And I want my students in front of each and every day to get a great education. Number two, you belong here. You're welcome here. You're welcome here. You know, there's, we have, we have so many opportunities for our students to kind of find their, find their space. I was at a mime show the other day and you can almost feel the family feel of that mime show. And, and a comment, a comment was made. If you can't find a club, an extracurricular, a co-curricular, or something to join and be part of, you're not looking very hard. And so finding a place for each and every kid to, to feel like a sense of belonging. And then lastly, you belong here. Pick West Moonee schools. It's competitive. I get it. There's a lot of wonderful school districts around the metro, but I want them to pick West Moonee schools. I want them to pick us for that education. So that's when I, when I unpack that, it's kind of, and then the next, the next one is, you know, come here, come here because if that's the, the opportunities, the opportunities to build a future for your children is, is in West Moonee. So you'll hear more about that down the road. So I think I was going to talk about our approach to this.
Yeah. And just what I mentioned before is when we're talking about community collaborations, right? It's, it's our school community. It's our families. It's the city.
It's, it's our school community. It's our families. It's the city, right? I know even like the, the police force, like everybody, we want to make sure that we're, we're having a very collaborative approach and, and, and being a part of the conversation to how, how we move forward, right? Again, aligning back to our strategic plan. It's really important for us to build relationship with the families. I know, I think we will be talking about the event, one of the events, I won't, I won't touch upon that. But just, you know, we, our, our staff is really focused on making sure that they're getting to know the families and, and we're getting feedback from them as, as things move forward. We try to address barriers to attendance. The whole We Belong campaign has been moving forward. We're going to have a story to share with you a little bit about that and consistently seeing how can we all work together? What's happening, right? What are, what are the barriers that, why, why our students aren't showing up sometimes, right? To school. And we know that we realize that there are different things besides they just don't want to come to school, right? We all have different barriers and understanding those are, is really important for how to address that issue. And then working together with families to remove those barriers and our greater community.
So when I talk, when I'm in the hallways, I'm talking to students all the time. Who's that one pro-social adult in your life that you feel connected to? You probably can think back at your school experience and think about that one adult, that coach, that sponsor, that teacher, or really any adult in the building that you felt a connection to that noticed when you weren't there, that you could go to when you have a problem. So important, one of the number one inhibitors of so many things happening in our schools. I think we got the data to show that we're making a difference. So when you look at attendance, you've probably read articles about chronic absenteeism across the country. Particularly even after COVID, getting people back into schools and some of those kinds of things. It is, it is a national issue. It's definitely a state issue. It's a Westmore issue, but we tackled it head on when I got here. I was like, remember how I said, I need you here and you in front of a teacher? Well, I looked and I saw that we had over twenty percent chronically absent students across the district. And then at the high school is even, it was even greater. So look at, I want, I want to showcase kind of K six. So in two thousand twenty-four, fourteen percent of those kids were chronically absent. We cut that in half. In the junior high, we've, we've definitely shaved that off. We have not cracked the code at the high school yet. I want this, I want to crack the code at the high school. It's a big high school. I need kids to feel connected in the high school. And so then when you look at the overall rates, we're, we're quite a redoubt. Well, here, there's a better, there's a better one right here. And I'll have, I think Elizabeth talk about.
Oh, yeah.
This shows, illustrates it.
Well, you were doing such a nice job.
So now I'll just advance.
So as of April twenty twenty-five, the K through twelve absenteeism rate is sixteen point nine percent, down from twenty point seven percent. And most of that is being driven, well, all of that is being driven by our K through eight improvement and especially our, our elementary. As of April twenty twenty-five, or twenty twenty-five, the K through six absenteeism rate is seven point four percent, down from fourteen percent. So that's half. And you're going to hear, I believe it's next, that Crestview is really leading the way on that.
Unbelievable. Yeah, just, just the, the attitude. And I'm going to tell you that there was a synergy that was created. There was an energy that was created on August third. And we, and with, with the city of Clive, if you're able to get to that event, and we are still riding that wave with the relationship with the fire department, the police department, the city and the school. And so let's talk a little bit about that.
Yeah. Well, first, did anybody see this in the news that, that Crestview had gotten the goat award? And I don't know, it was a really neat article and they interviewed some of the students as well and they were really excited. They said, well, in the end, if we end up winning, we actually get to go pet goats. Aside from having their teacher, I believe where a goat has, right? So they were, they were really excited and it's really great to see our students working hard at resolving, right? Or trying to work together to resolve, resolve that issue. I know Principal Mendoza is doing a wonderful job within the district and consistently connecting again with the families and with the students to, to have received that award. So we're really excited to have it spotlighted on WHO TV's Scholastic Spotlight. And so if you're, it was on March tenth and you can Google it and watch the video, but it was, it was really, it was really sweet. And part of that, we also attribute to the work that is being done as part of that, of the client or the, the family event that was done in Clive. I caught the end of it, unfortunately, but I know Elizabeth can maybe share a little bit about, yeah, about the experience. But the work there and, and to see the, the families, right, gathering and, and really feeling as part of the community goes back to even just saying, we belong here, right? And that's why it's really important to make people feel as like they belong and they feel more invested into their communities.
So you know, we went from twenty-two percent down to five percent, which is unbelievable. So let's talk real quick about finances. Okay? Ted, you knew I had to talk a little bit about money here. I don't know if you're experiencing any kind of financial challenges. But I knew you weren't, so.
We're about to prove our budget tonight.
I tell people that our greatest strength is also our greatest weakness. People come to Westmore and the Westmore Community School District, and then they stay here. They make great neighbors and citizens. They, they, they love the amenities that Clive and the city of Westmore offer. I jokingly say, you're holding my house as hostage. You know, I've got a lot of empty nesters. They'll say that. They'll go, you're right. My whole cul-de-sacs, empty nesters. I need your house for a young family with two children playing.
Thank you.
When you look at, when you look at the trend, really since two thousand nineteen and a little bit before, the resident enrollment, the blue line has continued to go down and it will continue to go down. Now, I will tell you that it's the term re-green. Eventually it will re-green, right? Eventually the homes will flip and whatnot. But in the meantime, we've got a lot of challenges because you know what drives, right? The headcount in October is what kind of drives financing for us. What's kind of keeping us, my words, afloat is open and rolled in. We get a tremendous number of students saying, we want to come to Westmore, particularly from Waquis and Des Moines Public. We get a lot of kids from Waquis Schools and Des Moines Public, and we lose the most to Urbandale. And there's a, an area that some of our families are closer to an elementary school in Urbandale than they do Westmore. That's what they tell me when I ask, because I do ask. And so we are having some challenges with, with, with our enrollment right now. And we're going to continue to have that challenge coming up. And then, you know, I guess I jumped a little bit ahead and I apologize on it because you were going to talk about open enrollment. Anything you want to add to that?
I think you just, you can continue.
Okay, that's, it's a nice number. We have twice as many students coming in than going out. We did do a campaign. When somebody open rolls in, we give them a card, fill this out, why'd you choose us? We do a card when they leave us. Sorry to see you leave. You always have a home here, Westmore Community Schools. Can you tell us, you know, you know, why? That's where I learned about the Urbandale piece. I also, you know, I, you know, I started preschool here. That's what made us think about wraparound care. There's a lot of different, I work in this area. So we've, we've kind of looked at that in, in ways to maybe we could, we could solve that problem so they stay in Westmore.
And the only thing to add is just like board members, when we're walking through our own neighborhoods and we see little kids, we're like, yes, more students. So we even had the idea of like, what can we do to, yeah, so that we have, yeah, more families in our, in our district and how, and affordable housing, of course.
So, so, so one of the drivers is of course, up on the state aid. You can see we were hopeful. We had two point five in there as well as two, and then two. So we are going to have beyond what's called the budget guarantee next year. Not happy about that. But we're going to, we're, we will, I'm going to be real frank, we are going to experience some reductions. We're going to have to look and see to do some. We're currently doing some program evaluations. You know, everything we do has merit. I know the things that you do in the city have merit as well, but you also have to make some tough decisions, right? So what's the return on investment on the things that we're doing? What are the higher leveraging things that we're doing in order to continue to provide the education folks are wanting? But also that fiscal responsibility that we have. So we are experiencing those challenges right now. But we're proud of this. I think Elizabeth, you were going to talk about this.
Well, all right. I don't want to take too much time, but if you notice, Westmore's at the bottom. And that means that our property tax rates are the lowest for our school district versus any of the area school districts. Part of that is because we're not growing, but part of it is also just.
We don't have debt service. We don't have any debt service.
Yeah, we've been committed to maintaining quality education without raising free taxes.
So let's talk about this collaboration. If you weren't familiar with this opportunity. So here's some things that we've had going on. Yep, we went right to you.
Well, I think I already touched upon the, the Crestview back to school bash, but I think you were going to talk about Lennon Park.
Well, we've had the city come in and ask the kids at Crestview what they want.
That recommendation will actually be coming to the council at their next meeting.
Excellent. And then also the joint newsletter. I think that, that turned out to be a really nice project and we're going to continue where our communication folks got together and. That, that, that is awesome. So, hey, I, you know, I tell you what, I, you probably have a long night. You have a much more long agenda than us. I promise we'll just come once a year, if that's okay. We're proud, we're proud of what we're doing in Westmore Schools. But I'm really proud and I brag a lot about the relationship I have with, with Matt in particular. And the desire, I think, I think we share a very strong interest in working together and getting rid of my words redundancies. Redundancies in our services. I think the first time we met, he said, we're thinking about doing a library. So why would you do a library? I got a library right here. You know, so I think we, we need to just be thinking a little bit more creatively about how jointly we can work together because again, we save the same folks. The only thing we did talk about tonight is Indian Hills. I think there's an opportunity for us to partner some way in there. Here, the neighborhood of Indian Hills uses that green space almost like a park. We recognize that. And let's, how do we harness that energy and take advantage of that with some kind of a project? I don't know what it is, but we're, we're thinking about it. We're really thinking about it. And it's what we've been having conversations with, within the meetings that we're having. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have at this time.
Quick, quick comment. You know, I know that we're talking about one district in the state, but I, I really enjoyed the presentation, especially some of your work. It seems like empowering and lifelong learning. Like those, those make such a difference. Even if it's not, you know, universities or four-year degrees, like just instilling the idea of learning one of the greatest.
Absolutely. So I appreciate it. And the magic happens at the classroom level. Let me, let me not, and I say that, that's where the magic is happening. So I really see our role from the board table to superintendentcy and that is, is that how to support that happening. And sometimes we forget that.
And that makes so much of a difference.
Absolutely.
But it's hard to reach those kids sometimes, you know, especially when just they've been straight up strengths, right? So, yeah, really, really.
Dr. Adams, have you guys completed all of your upgrades for security?
We have, we have. Yeah. Have we completed? We, that list, there, I have a saying, there's more month than money. You know, so we did walkthroughs with the Westmore Police Department and used, completed all of those assessments. We've, we've got a number of those off. Some of them are a little bit bigger ticket items that we're trying to put within our ten-year facility plan. But there's a lot of quick, fast, early wins. I'll give you an example, numbering the doors, so important. If something were to happen, you can say, go to door nineteen E. As opposed, you know, so we've done a lot of, a lot of projects and more still to come. Yep. Cameras, lots of cameras, making sure that everybody can hear what's going on in the building. We've done a lot of tests and whatnot and much, much more to come. Absolutely. Thanks for asking that question.
Tell us more.
So, so what Ted's talking about is the state gives fifty thousand dollars per building. We applied for the grant. We got it. I will just tell you that there was more than fifty thousand dollars worth of projects within each of the buildings. And so we're just trying to be very strategic to getting them done. But lots of quick, fast, early wins from those front secure entrances to, like I said, cameras to panic buttons that allow us to contact emergency real quick to things that I can't talk about publicly, to be real frank. So thanks for asking that question. Safety is near and dear to my heart. It's probably the number one, right? Absolutely. We're in local parentis, right? There, for the parent. We gotta, we're already behind the eight ball. Nobody thinks that anybody can take care of their kids as well as they can. And so you're already behind that eight ball. So you got to do everything you can to, you know, rest assured they're taking great care of your kids, local parentis, yeah.
I've appreciated the with the board and yourself. And that was a welcome change. We've all been, most I've been looking for. Just took some of the right leadership to be on the boards and the, and the manager, the superintendent to, to get along as well and come together on that. And I think, you know, in the couple of meetings I've been in with you all, lots has happened. A lot of things have happened. And I know I pushed pretty hard. You know, I kept telling Matt, we need wins, we need wins, we need wins, right? And they're coming quick.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah. So from that August get together up at the Harburg Center to, to these meetings, I hope for this continues.
That's our plan. That's our plan. Thank you. And then I would leave with you. Thank you for serving. Every time I finish an email to my board, I say, thank you for serving. Thank you for serving. Thank you for being here tonight on your time to support your community. I, that doesn't go unnoticed by us. So thank you so much for that. And board members, thank you for being here tonight, too.
Again, thank you all for being here. And just to warn you, I'll be at the board meeting Monday night.
They do know that.
Well, welcome you in. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you so much. Next item is consent required to resolution. Motion second on consent. Further discussion. Seeing none, let council please vote. And will clerk please post that? And consent passes by a vote of five to zero. Next up, we've got a public hearing on one hundred and fourteenth Street Bridge. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, we've published one register on March twenty-five.
Good. Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. The city received bids last week for a repair project on the one hundred and fourteenth street bridge. You have a tabulation of the six bids received in your packet. Five of those six were under the engineer's estimate. We are looking at a pretty quick turnaround on this with a substantial completion date, middle of June, to take advantage of the existing closure that's out there on one hundred and fourteenth street. We don't do a lot of this bridge type work, so we haven't contracted directly with Boulder, the parent low bidder in the past. Our design engineer, Kelvin Burns, obviously does do a lot of that work and they didn't, not have any reservations with their work on similar projects. So as a result, we would be recommending award to Boulder contracting in the listed amount. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim? Motion second to close the hearing. Before we do so, is there anyone in the chamber to address the council on that issue? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that? And the public hearing is closed by a vote of five to zero.
I approve the resolution, approve plans and specs.
Second.
Motion second to approve plans and specs. Further discussion. Seeing none, with council please vote. And will clerk please post that? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Much second receive the bids. Further discussion. Seeing none, council please vote. And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero.
I approve the resolution, awarding contract to Boulder contracting for one hundred and fifty-four thousand seven dollars.
Further discussion. Seeing none, with council please vote on the resolution of awarding the contract. And then with clerk please. By a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have a public hearing on our budget and while Liz is approaching, I do have some data on the turnout. That is, we had a ten point three six percent turnout in special election versus sixteen point one percent in the regular election. So as was commented earlier, the regular election draws more.
I didn't catch that fast enough before.
Did we publish public notice?
Yes, you have to go on this one, publish the one register on March twenty-eighth, thousand five hundred.
Very good. Liz?
Good evening, Mary Council. I want to take this opportunity to thank the city leadership and the executive team and staff for putting together the fiscal year twenty-six budget. We started with strategic planning, of course, and capital improvement planning back in August. And we held several staff meetings, but we also held many public meetings to incorporate the public input into this process. For eight consecutive years, we stayed at the ten point, the ten dollars and fourteen cents. For eight consecutive years, we stayed at the 10 point, the $10.14 levy rate. Last year, we decreased the property taxes to $9.92, and we're proposing to maintain the $9.92 this year. And what we have before you is the resolution approving the fiscal year budget. We put it in the final form, you have everything in your packet as far as the public hearing that was published. And we have not received any comments as of the state. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those on budget.
Any questions for Liz? If not, we need to close. Motion second, close public hearing. Further discussion, seeing none, with council please vote, and will the clerk please post that? And the public hearing is closed by a vote of five to zero.
Move for approval, approving FY 2025, 26 budget.
Motion second on the resolution. Further discussion. Seeing none, with the council please vote, and will clerk please post that? That resolution approving the budget passes by a vote of five to zero. Liz, you're up next on proposed utility rate adjustments.
Damn, there's a lot of actions there listed. Now that the budget's been approved, it's appropriate next step to move forward with our utility ordinances. And put, put forward the cash flows that PFM helped us with along this way. Clive's rate are proposed to stay in the mid to the low tiers as it relates to the comparable cities. It's evidence that you're wanting to reinvest in our infrastructure for the next, next year. So we incorporated a 2% increase on water, 4% on sewer, and then a 3% increase on stormwater. And then I also wanted to draw your attention to the ERU methodology policy that's been included as well in the packet. And that is providing some guidelines for staff on how we're going to, which will impact the commercial tax ratepayers. Of course, that depends on the size of their commercial property. So after we go through the three readings and the ordinances of the ordinances, they're scheduled to go into effect in May. Of course, that will be just in time to be built in June and then collected in July. The evening of the third reading consideration, I just want to make a note that we'll be bringing forward for consideration, the solid waste resolution, which is determined by, by Metro Waste Authority. So with these changes, both administration and communication, communications team will be reaching out to those commercial ratepayers as we discussed at the public input meeting. So any questions that you have on any of those processes?
Questions for Liz?
And move that ordinance number. Resolution for the equivalent rating.
Second on item A, further discussion. Seeing none, with council please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? And the ERU passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1159 pertaining to water rates, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Motion second for the first reading of 1169. Further discussion. Seeing none, with council please vote. And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1160 pertaining to the sewer rates, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Motion second for item C, further discussion. Seeing none, with the council please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. We have one more.
I just want Ted to take it all in. 1161 pertaining to stormwater rates, having been made considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Motion second on 1161, further discussion. With council please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? And that passes also by a vote of five to zero. Liz, Geo Box.
Matt, were you able to get some information to the council before this evening?
I did not, so you can sure.
Oh, well, I'm happy to relay that we maintain our AAA bond rating, so very happy. And congratulations to the city's leadership on that. So the action for this evening would be a resolution, just setting the date and time for that sale to occur on April 24. That will authorize also the issuance of the preliminary, preliminary official statement, which was included in your packet with all of the list of the CIP items that we plan to fund for the next year.
I had that summary of the same in Iowa, the AAA.
Is it just?
There is.
Westmorey, Iowa City, five.
North Liberty, North Liberty.
There was six, right? There was six, but I don't know what happened with the last.
Paul County.
Okay.
We haven't looked it up recently, but that was the list. We're the smallest.
We are the smallest.
Population wise.
Very rare.
And we were the 12th for a while there, the 12th smallest in the nation. Population wise, the AAA.
We can look that up and hit that to you.
And Liz, for those who might listen to recording or watching live, why is that important? What impact does AAA have on us?
That impacts our investments and our, and when we're bonding for dollars and our debt issuance. And it, it is very important to the taxpayer to save our dollars.
And his credit score.
City's credit score.
Meaning we can borrow money at a much lower rate, so we're saving lots of money.
Well, let's hope that that stays true. In two weeks.
That's the idea.
Yes.
So what we need is.
Prove the resolution.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution, set public hearing, further discussion. Seeing none, with council please vote, and will clerk please post that? And that passes by a suspenseful vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Very good. Matthew, you're up next on post ordinance 1162.
Brief history for the recording. We did have previous ordinance. Ordinance 1158 was brought before the council. It was tabled, and then it was brought back up and died for a lack of a second with council directing staff to come back with the new ordinance, which is before you tonight, which is ordinance 1162. And it simply removes the language from our ordinance that says the city manager's specific term length and says that he will serve for a specific term as defined in his agreement. So that's the change. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Legal's here to address it, too.
Questions for Matthew? And again, just reaffirm, this is consistent with what is in most other city diets, other cities.
Yes, yeah, we did a survey of other cities and it's very consistent. Because of the benign change, we would recommend waiving the need for three readings, just thought I'd adopt it tonight.
So we would need to suspend the rules.
Although the rule requiring that ordinance be considered and voted on for passage. At two council meetings prior to this meeting, we suspend it with respect to ordinance number 1162.
Motion second, suspend the rules, further discussion. Seeing none, with council please vote, and will clerk please post that? Our rules are suspended by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1162, we consider placing models of passage and adoption.
Second.
The motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, with council please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number 1162 is declared to be inactive. Very good. Next up, we have a presentation from Dart.
Thank you. We also have a presentation for Commissioner Michael O'Nee. I never get that word out right, but Srikanth, it has been great to work with you. We want you to bring a dart bus stop, and we figured you'd need some sunglasses where you're going. Thank you for all you've done, really appreciated the insights of time and energy you've spent on Dart.
Appreciate it.
And I think we want to get a picture.
Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for the time tonight to talk about Reimagine Dart. We have Ricky Angara with Jarrett Walker and Associates on the phone. And I'm going to kick off the presentation, but he's going to have the bulk of it. So he's running the slideshow on his end. But we had the opportunity to talk, and we got to go to the next slide, a few months ago about where we were at with things with Reimagine Dart. Want to give you an update and some of this you've seen, but the FY 24 ridership in Clive. Want to share that ridership, what we're doing with Reimagine Dart, what's going on with our budget? And then specifically get into the system redesign options that are in front of the community now. So in looking at your ridership, you had about 8,000 fixed route bookings in Clive and just over 4,000 paratransit trips. You will see probably no surprise with what you have in your community in terms of medical facilities and otherwise, that the majority of customers are coming into your community on paratransit services as well. We are seeing, seeing growth there. You also will see on the right side, right-hand side, that we have been working to implement the property tax formula that tries to better align community investment with community benefit. And with that, Clive's levy rate has decreased from 66 cents to 58 cents. And so those have been a continued effort. We are about halfway through the implementation of that property tax formula. Go to the next slide. This talks a little bit about why we're doing Reimagine Dart. We all know, and I know Mayor Edwards was a part of the formation of Dart in 2006, and we're almost 20 years past that point. And a lot has changed in our community. The way our suburbs have developed has changed. And the way people are working and using transit has changed a lot as well. And, and we can see that in the ridership trends and our express routes. The traditional white collar commuter commuting to downtown, they're working from home now. And we now have people that are more needing to travel midday evenings and weekends as they get to retail and other types of jobs. We also know we're all in a situation of very tight resources and trying to make the most with what we have. And with that, we had a conversation when I interviewed for the position about what are we trying to achieve with our regional transit system? And it was agreed that there wasn't a clear consensus on that. And this conversation is really meant to start giving some clarity to the direction and what we want out of our transit system so that we can make the most of the resources we have with that. With that, I want to talk on the next slide about budget. So the commission will be making two decisions in May. There will be a May 6 regular meeting for feedback and input on these items. And then on May 19, the commission will be taking a special vote on these two items. One will be, what is the budget for the system redesign? You'll see in here that the biggest budget is a status quo. And that, when I say status quo, means the current hours and miles of service that we have on the road. So we will change how they're run and all that is working, but the hours and miles would stay the same. With that, we expect as we look to the future that we have an average 4% expense growth, mostly driven by wages and insurance. Those are big, some of our biggest expenses. The commission is also considering smaller network scenarios. And part of that again is the reality that we know that there are a lot of constraints being put on all of the tax revenue. And we want to be respectful of that and show that there is an option to have sustainability with a smaller network as well. In addition, the legislative, the property tax bill that's out there does have a pretty significant impact on Dart. And so the legislature may decide this for the commission, because if they pass the bill as it's currently written, we might be looking at a 30 to 40%, a 30 to 40% cut in services to have that five-year sustainability. So not something we're excited about, but we also are trying to, you know, accept the realities we have and make the most of that. And with that, we're going to be focusing the rest of the presentation on how we allocate the transit resources that we have. Ricky will be talking a lot about coverage and ridership and the difference in those choices. And, you know, if you have feedback and questions for us, we certainly want that. And the next slide has the timeline, just to, so you know what we're looking at here. And Reimagine Dart is about more than just the system redesign. There are other components coming next. We're doing a fair study. We're going to be looking at what we charge people to ride the bus. We're, the MPO is doing an economic impact study. We're also doing an analysis, once we get through the network work of if, if there is any other alternative sources, if a private, a private entity can run anything more efficiently than us, we want to look at all those options. But the base of our system is really what the network is and how far we travel. And so with that, the redesign is the first big thing we're looking at. You can see we have two concepts tonight we'll be sharing for you for feedback. We'll take that feedback, share it with the commission, they'll vote on the 19th, and we'll immediately begin work on a draft plan that will be brought out to the, out to the public in August. Then we'll take feedback on that, also work on some of the other considerations that need to come alongside that. Along, for example, the tiers that are part of our property tax formula. They're based very much on service. Service will be changing. There'll be some conversation on those tiers in the fall as well. And we expect the commission to adopt the final transit network in December so that we can begin implementation to roll out a new network in summer of '26. We do need about a six-month lead on that because of the amount of change this is for customers and infrastructure. We look, we have about 1,700 bus stops in the community. We're looking at a lot of changes of where bus stops are. We're looking at changes in communicating routes, routes, changes that impact people's lives. So we do want to give enough of a runway for that. Before I hand it over to Ricky, do you have any questions for me on budget and timeline? Okay. I'm pleased to introduce Ricky. We are very thankful for their work. I'll also be sharing some handouts that I'll pass around, and Ricky, it's all yours.
Great, thank you, Amanda. Can everybody in the room hear me okay?
Yep.
Is that yes? Okay. Perfect. So, so like Amanda was saying, my name is Ricky Angada, and I am a transit planner, and I work for a company that's called Jarrett Walker and Associates. And what I focus in is that I do transit studies throughout the country and throughout the world that are very similar to this one. We evaluate existing networks and we advise on network changes and very often full network redesigns, just like what Dart is doing today. But the most important thing is our mission statement. We foster clear conversations about transit that lead to confident decisions. Now, what that means is that I am not here to tell you what you should do. I'm not here to tell you that you should do what we did in Miami, what we did in Houston because it worked there. I'm here to tell, to give you the options of what the transit network could be, to have a clear conversation about the goals associated with transit and together come up with the best network for the Des Moines region. So like Amanda was saying, I'm going to show you two concepts of what the network for Dart can be. But before I get into that, I want to talk a little bit about transit goals. You hear a lot about ridership, and ridership is often very important in a lot of communities, but ridership is just one goal. And at no point in the study am I saying that you should want high ridership, because there are also other opposing goals. And that brings me to the ridership coverage trade-off. To explain it, imagine this fictional town. In this town, the lines are streets and the dots are people and jobs. Most of the activity is concentrated on just two corridors, as it happens in many cities and many different neighborhoods. We have 18 buses and you hire me to design a transit network. The first thing I would do is ask you what the goal is. If you tell me that the goal is ridership, then what I would do is design a network that is focused on the places where most people and jobs are and provide really good, useful, frequent service just there so that many people find it useful. Which means that if the goal is ridership, I would design a network like this. You focus all of the service just in the two streets where most of the activity is, and you put all of the 18 buses on just two routes. By putting all the buses on just two routes, you end up getting service that is very frequent. So here, you might get a bus that comes every 10 minutes. And if a bus comes every 10 minutes, then everybody that lives along there is going to find the service very useful because they don't have to wait a long time, so they can travel really far in the limited time that they have in their day to travel. They can also transfer really easily to the other route because that's coming very frequently, too. So it's very easy for people to move around in both these networks. So a lot of people would find the service useful. A lot of people would use the network, so you would get higher ridership. Not just higher ridership, but also higher ridership relative to cost. And we call that productivity in the transit world. But this network doesn't go everywhere. Down here at the southeast of this town lives Mrs. Jones. And Mrs. Jones doesn't like this network because it doesn't go near her house. If you want to provide service to Mrs. Jones in the southeast, Mr. Smith in the northeast, and to everybody in every little corner of this town, maybe what you want is not ridership. Maybe what you want is coverage. If your goal is coverage, I would design a network that looks like this. If your goal is coverage, I would design a network that looks like this. You spread the service out and spreading it out, you try to reach every little corner of the town. In doing so, you spread the service out thinly. So instead of two routes, you now have 10. But then that also means that the frequency is lower because every route might only have one or two buses. So in this network, every route, a bus comes every 60 minutes. Not everybody has time in their day to wait for a 60-minute bus, which means that you wouldn't get a lot of people to use this network. Some people would use it and they would find it very useful for them and they would be very appreciative. But you still wouldn't get a lot of people because a lot of people don't have the patience or the time to wait for a 60-minute bus. So you would not get high ridership here. But that's okay. Because the goal of this network is not to get high ridership. The goal of this network is to provide high coverage. And so to measure the success of a network like this, you would just count the number of people and jobs that are near some service. Both of these goals are important, but they lead in opposite directions. So it's important to think about each one. If you're going for a ridership goal, they'll be thinking like a business. You would try to get high ridership so it's a lower subsidy per passenger. You would support dense and walkable development. And it also lines up with all the sustainability goals like reducing vehicle miles traveled. If you're going for a coverage goal, that'd be providing access for all. So you would be providing some sort of lifeline access to as many people as possible, regardless of where they live. You would support suburban low density development. And you'd be able to provide service not just to every city, but to as many neighborhoods and places as possible. These two goals are opposite. They are mathematically opposite, which means that you can't use the same dollar to do both. But the good news is that these are on the spectrum. And so you can choose a point between them, but because they're opposite, it means that the more you do of one, the less you do of the other. And it's really hard to choose between these two because they both represent goals that are really important for a lot of people. So to help you all, help the public, stakeholders, city councils, see what it would be like for Dart to focus on each of these goals. In this phase of this project, we have developed two conceptual alternatives of what the network could look like in the Des Moines region. Before I show you the concepts, let me mention three quick things about these two networks. First thing is that the budget that they're using is a budget that, the budget that these concepts are using is the same budget that Dart has today. So it's using the same total number of hours that buses are on the street today, just allocated differently. We know that there's a lot of uncertainty about what the budget might be in the future, but regardless of what budget level you end up with, this decision and this trade-off between goals is still relevant and still important. So for this exercise, we're using the same budgets today. Second thing is that between these two concepts, every city has a similar amount of service. So if you're looking within Clive, you will see that there's a similar amount of service between both concepts. And I'll dig into that later. And the third thing is that I want to remind you that these are concepts. They are not proposals, they are not recommendations. So here, we want to focus on the big picture and focus on the goals, not necessarily all the little details. Before I dive into the concepts themselves, anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question. So if, if we're talking about, I mean, either one of these, but let's just use the ridership concept, for example. If we are reducing the budget, or, or let's say, let's say the decision is made for us that the budget is reduced, right? What is that? What's the, and I get that this is a concept, but where would the easy wins be to get those budget constraints back in line, right? Is it, is it more of the dark blue lines? Is it the red lines? Is it the light blue lines? Where's the easy wins there?
Good question. So that would depend on what goal you end up with. If you, let's say that you're designing a network in this fictional town, but you have half of those resources. Then maybe what that means is that these two routes in the ridership goal, they would still exist. But maybe instead of every 10 minutes, they're maybe every 30 minutes or so. Maybe if you're going for a coverage goal and you have half those resources, and maybe that means that instead of having 10 routes, you can only afford to have six. So regardless of what budget and level you end up with, the way that you design the network still depends on the goals that you decide between these two. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so if, if I'm understanding you correctly, even if there is a budget reduction for any reason, it doesn't necessarily automatically equate to less routes.
Not necessarily. If your goal is to focus on coverage, maybe you have the same number of routes, but maybe they're even less frequent.
Yeah, that's where we, like even, even with the ridership, for example, it doesn't mean that some of those further out routes go away. It just means maybe the frequency.
Yeah, it would, it would depend on the goal and it depends on the quarters where we would concentrate service to achieve those goals. Yep. Good question. Any other questions? Okay. So before I show you the concept, let me show you the existing network. This, in all of our maps, the colors are very important. So whenever you see a red route, that is a route that comes every 15 minutes or better. If you see a purple route, that comes every 20 minutes, a dark blue every 30, and a light blue every 60. The current network has a, only one red route that comes out of downtown and along University. That's a combination of the 3 and the 60 that combine for every, frequency every 10 minutes on University. The inner part of University. There are 20-minute routes that go north, west, and south. And some 30-minute routes that goes towards the east of the region. There are 60-minute routes spread throughout the region. And then you have a lot of these brown routes. The brown routes on this map are routes that only run during the peaks. And that's a lot of the service that is provided today. So let's zoom in on Clive and see what the service that you have today is there. You have some 20-minute services that make its way over to Valley West Mall on the southern edge of Clive. To the west of that, you have a 60-minute service on the 52 that runs every 60 minutes. And the other services that you have are brown, which means that they only come during the peaks. So there is the 93 going up on 86, the 74 going up 100th, and the 92 going west on Hickman. So those three services are very limited today. They only come for a few hours in the morning and a few hours in the afternoon. That's the service that you have today. Let's look at the ridership concept. Big picture, it looks like this. The colors look different, but also notice that there are less routes. Since we're concentrating service into the busiest places, the ridership concept has less routes, but there are more of those red 15-minute services. There are 15-minute services going Western University to Valley West Mall, west on Ingersoll, northwestern MLK to Polk County River Place, to the east along University and to the south along Southwest 9th. Then there are several 30-minute services and a little bit of 60-minute services reaching some communities that are a little farther away. If we zoom in on Clive, we can see that now there is 15-minute service to Valley West Mall. So an improvement over the 20-minute service that you have today. West of that, along University, where today you have some 60-minute services, this has some 30-minute services. And then there's also this Route 4. This Route 4 is a big loop that goes out of downtown and then hits a lot of key destinations before it makes its way back down. So the whole route goes east and north on 14th, East 14th, west on Euclid to Merrill Hay Mall, west on Douglas, and then down on 86. On 86, it makes its way into Clive. Then it goes across on University Boulevard over to the Walmart in Windsor Heights, down to Valley Junction, and then back into downtown and Ingersoll. So that Route 4 comes every 30 minutes through Clive, hitting a lot of people and jobs that you have on 86 and connecting to a lot of key destinations in the region. Let's look at the coverage concept. Big picture, it looks like this. You see that there are a lot more routes than there were in the ridership concept, but they are, most of them are blue. There are still two red segments on University and Ingersoll. But apart from that, everything else is blue. Either dark blue for every 30 minutes or light blue for every 60 minutes. Let's zoom in on Clive. If we look at Clive in the fixed routes, the lines that we see here, we see that there is 60-minute service that makes its way to Valley West Mall and then west along University. It dips down a little bit, but along University, it's 60-minute service. So it's less frequent than the service that you're providing today, where you have 20-minute service over to Valley, Valley West Mall. Now, notice these brown zones that we have on here. Those brown zones are microtransit zones. And if you're familiar with the Ankeny On Demand service, it's something similar to that, but it's a little different. So I wanted, I want to talk about that a little more. Before I talk about it, just notice that it covers a big part of Clive. This is the spectrum of what transit services can be. Imagine this neighborhood with one major street. On the left is what a fixed route would do. That bold line shows that a fixed route would stay on that main street for every trip. And it has virtual, it has fixed stops where people can actually walk out and they would expect the bus to be there, just like any fixed route in your system today. On the right is door-to-door fully flexible service. This is the microtransit service that is what you're doing in On Demand Ankeny today. In here, someone can call or schedule a ride. They would get picked up from their house. They would get driven to their destination. And then the driver would go on to pick up another person. Now, that type of service is a coverage tool. And we only have that in the coverage concept, and it's mostly because of capacity. If you look at what the fixed route net, fixed route services do today, they move anything between 10 to 35 riders per hour. And if you look at what microtransit can do, you can only really move four, maybe at the very most, five riders per hour. And the reason for that is because of what the driver has to do to move all those people. If you think about what a driver is doing here on the right, they are going to down someone's cul-de-sac to pick them up. They go to their house, they wait for them to put their coat on, they get in the car, they drive them to the destination, drop them off, then go drive to pick up the next person, drive to destination, next person. So it's very similar to a taxi service. And if you think about what a taxi driver can do, they can move at the very most four, maybe five people in an hour. So it's just really restricted by what the driver can physically do. So microtransit service is just physically limited to a maximum capacity. So you will never be able to get high ridership relative to cost. There's a spectrum of things that you could do between these, but I want to point to this one because this is what we have in the coverage concept in Clive. Instead of having service that can go down everybody's cul-de-sac, the driver would stay on the main streets. And by staying in the main streets, it means that when someone calls for a ride, they might have to wait up to an hour and they're going to have to walk down to a main street to meet the bus. But what this is doing is that it's making it a little simpler for the driver because they don't have to go in and out of every cul-de-sac. So they can stay on the main street. But while it's doing that, it is still providing service within a quarter mile of everyone in the zone. And that's important because that's the goal of these type of services. It's to provide some sort of service close to as many people as possible. And by staying on the main streets, that's what this is doing. So these are the microtransit zones are in the coverage concept.
Ricky, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So are, are you, are we presuming that these, these microtransit routes are, are being serviced by the standard buses?
That is to be determined in, in many places.
It seems to me that you, if we, if we didn't use the standard large bus, but we're using, you know, passenger shuttles or something a little bit more flexible, get more because you could put more of those vehicles on the road.
So when you.
The economics, but.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point. So you might drive smaller vehicles for this specific type of service because you wouldn't be moving a lot of people. But in transit, the important thing to keep in mind is that operating cost is mostly labor. You don't, most of the cost is from the actual driver driving the service and just the hours that go into the service. You don't save a lot of money from smaller vehicles. If you're in a fixed route and at one point of the day, you get the bus fills up because there's a lot of kids or whatever the case may be. Start smartest thing to do is to run that big bus all day on that fixed route. Because switching that bus is going to be more expensive. It's more time for the driver to go switch to a smaller bus. And running the smaller bus all the time just means that it won't have the capacity when it needs it at that hour. So on a fixed route.
Cost differences that could be offset.
So the capital costs, when you look at the difference between them, it's minimal. And so there is more of a consequence of not being able to move people because you can't fit them on the bus. And that happens a few times with Dart with when school kids get out and they get on the buses. So that, that definitely happens sometimes in the day.
Ricky, just, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So you're saying basically that, the, the, the capital that will save by using smaller buses or like passenger vans or whatever it is, is going to be offset or maybe more than offset by the increased wage costs and have more drivers to drive those smaller vehicles.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear everything.
So does the, he was asking, does the, um, does that capital savings basically get offset by the operating needing to pay more drivers? That fair summary?
Yeah.
And I have an additional factor to that.
Yes, if you do need to operate more drivers or if you need to move, have the driver go in to switch a vehicle to then come out, that's more expensive. Paying the time for the driver is more expensive than the savings that you would get from a smaller vehicle to begin with.
And just acknowledge too, if this is feedback we've heard on vehicle size. So we have, we are running the smaller vehicles on Ankeny On Demand and we have adjusted the fleet size. We now have about 20 of our vehicles that have switched from 40-foot buses to 30-foot buses. So we have been trying to be responsive, but it is a fine balance. We are hearing feedback from drivers. And again, there is the oftentimes you have to come in and switch the bus, which ends up costing more as well. So there's, there's a balance, but I want.
There is, and I mean, because I still struggle with the idea of rightsizing buses or because some of it depends on the time of day and, and some of it depends on the route itself. And so it seems like there should be able to be a blend there somewhere. That's the sweet spot. I don't, I mean, you guys are the experts, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why depending on what we choose will influence our future. Depending what model we choose will influence what we do next in terms of vehicle purchases.
Amanda, when you look at those type of models and you look forward to renewable energy vehicles, electric versus, versus diesel or gas, what movement are you guys going through to move forward with that's really the best choice for Dart?
Yeah, in terms of the propulsion system itself. Yep, so we are actually updating our zero emissions transition plan at this point because so much of what is happening with electric vehicles was driven by where the federal funding was coming in. And so that is changing with a new administration. So we are working on, we always have to have a zero emissions transition plan. So far, electric is still where most of that savings in terms of emissions and the cost benefit analysis weighs out. But we are updating that because of the changes in administration, the changes in priorities. We're also looking at biofuels, looking at, and looking at compressed natural gas as well. So I don't have an exact, like here's the future because we're really revisiting it given our experiences and what we've learned as well.
So I have a couple of questions on it. And we'll back to the first slide, I think. 7,000 or something people that we moved in Clive, right?
7,000 people that got on, yeah.
On a year.
Yeah.
And if you break that down to a daily basis, I don't know what that would be, I don't do this for math, but you then put that into unique users, your number is even smaller. I have a hard time believing that in this model where you can take 20 to 30 riders an hour, that if we did that math, Clive would need 30 riders an hour to even, we'd even have 30 riders.
Right.
So the four riders an hour would probably do if we did the math. And then I would argue that you don't have to switch out the buses, the cul-de-sac model. You're doing a small van, right? You could go up those because you only have four people in that neighborhood getting picked up. Three people, two people. So you're not going up and down cul-de-sacs. It's a good story to say we are, but you're not going up and down every cul-de-sac. Your, that phone call is coming in for the, the app is being filled out to my exact address where you're coming to that address. You're skipping every cul-de-sac that doesn't have a rider ready. So it's a bit much to say we're going down every cul-de-sac. And so I would say that the van model would work. But I, I guess I have a hard time understanding the numbers. Is the federal funding based on how many riders you can pick up in a year or how many you did pick up a year?
It is picked, it is based on the miles we run. It is based on population and it's based on actual rides.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, once I heard a, a presentation from a consultant years ago to my partnership, that we were putting buses on roads, the number of seats to then pay for the operations. pay for the operations of that bus, right? So if that bus was full of forty people, they're paying people, we would need this many seats to pay for that bus to go down that road, right? Um, and that was the national model. To me, it's a bit backwards, right? That hope doesn't pay the bills. The actual people pay the bills. And so I I I would entertain, I'd like to hear that, Ricky, of that cul-de-sac model. You're gonna have one or two people in here.
Right.
Culpusack, so why would I wait three blocks away for an hour when the guy's coming to my door like an Uber driver?
I'll let him answer that. I do want to acknowledge too, there's a few more slides that give you some more information on how this impacts Clive and happy to continue the conversation.
Yes, that's right. I haven't gotten to the bulk of my covers, to my presentation yet. Um, but in terms of, I I think I heard you right in talking about the the vehicle size and using the zone. So if there, if we're talking about this zone here, you wouldn't expect to move a whole lot of people just because of the capacity. So I think it's totally fine to have smaller vehicles for that. But if it's fixed route, then I I would still say that you should use the bigger vehicles because it's not just the people in Clive, it's connected, it's the route is going to many places. And so it might pick up some people in Clive, some people in West Des Moines, people in other places. And so in its totality, it might, the bus might fill up.
But but we know that, we, I guess I, for, you know, I uh, Chakat's taking off before the vote. So I'll be filling back in. Before that, I would need to know the numbers of the riders, right, that come through that route, through that town at any one given time. What is the maximum number on average over the last three years that goes that route that needs that forty-person bus? I I look, anecdotally, I tell you, you never need that bus, right? But I have to see the numbers and the numbers would drive the decision. I've never seen a bus full. I've never seen a bus half full. Uh, do I see all the buses? No. But those numbers should be easily obtained and then that should, the number should dictate, the rider should dictate, not population, not the hope and wish that we could move a thousand people an hour. What are the numbers telling?
Yep.
And.
And if you dig more into the numbers, you will see that um there are the having smaller vehicles and more complex fleet will actually be more expensive. And I had uh another client that in St. Petersburg, Florida, that recently looked at different vehicle sizes and they found out that the smaller vehicles are more expensive just because of having more complexity to maintenance and to everything and having to switch vehicles, not having flexibility to switch between routes. So there's a lot of other factors that go into it. And when you're thinking about just the operating cost be mostly labor, what that also means is that the empty buses that you see on the on the bus are not inefficiency. Those empty buses are extra capacity. They are basically free. They're not uh inefficiency, which is a common misconception when you look at a bus that might not be full.
Only if the numbers ever show us they're needed. And then the ROI, the risk versus reward is up to the board or the staff to say, yeah, it's needed once a year during the holidays, but.
And we have that information too. The last time we um did a bus purchase, we looked at those, what what was needed when in terms of buses. So we do have that information um and can can definitely get back to that. It's just right, I want to make sure we get to the other parts of this too.
Yes. So let's get into the uh the main part of the presentation. So let's think about how these two networks compare to each other, how they compare to the existing network. Let's talk about something that I call access, access to jobs, access to opportunities. If you wanna make a transit network useful, it matters that people can get to destinations in a reasonable amount of time, which means that people can actually reach places within the limited time that they have in their day. So let's imagine that there is a person, her name is Jane, and Jane here is in Valley West Mall and she's asking where she can get to in forty-five minutes using transit and walking. We can draw a bubble that shows where Jane can get to today using transit and walking. And that's the bubble of what it's like today with the existing network. This bubble takes into consideration time walking to a bus stop, waiting for the bus and actually riding the bus. And within this bubble, we can count up the number of jobs here and we can count Jane's access to jobs. We can count how free she is to reach jobs, reach destination and actually do things within a reasonable amount of time that she has in the day to travel. We can look at the same bubble in the ridership concept and we can compare the two. We can put them on top of each other and we can measure the the number of jobs that are in each of these and the number of residents in each of these and see how people's access changes. When we count that up, we see that the number of jobs is similar between both in the ridership concept and in the existing network, but you reach more residents. And that is because of the network changes that we did and how that route for the mentioning, how someone can transfer to and they can get down to Valley Junction to the west, they can go further into Jordan Creek and they can travel into other places a little bit north along the four on eighty-six as well. So that is because of the increased frequency and the way that we changed the network and the ridership concept. With that increased frequency, people can travel more. In the coverage concept, we decreased the frequency. So today you have twenty-minute service going to Valley West Mall and the areas near it. But in the coverage concept, we brought that down to every sixty minutes to be able to move service to other places. And in that, that's what the bubble looks like. That's what it looks like on top of existing. And if we count the number of jobs that a person can reach in those forty-five minutes, a person from Valley West Mall can reach twenty-nine thousand less jobs. That's because the frequency of a sixty-minute route makes people wait a long time, so they can't travel as far. So people can't reach many jobs within in those forty-five minutes. And if we look at residents as well, there's a lot of uh destinations near Valley West Mall. Twenty-four thousand less residents can reach Valley West Mall within those forty-five minutes. That's the coverage concept where you decrease frequently.
That you people have to wait a long time, but in that model, you can actually schedule the pickup though, correct? So you you act.
Not here. This is, this is fixed route.
Forty-five minutes, but.
That's a sixty-minute fixed route, so. No.
Right. Right.
Right. So that's just one location, but I want to show that we did that analysis throughout the entire region and this map shows what it's like for everywhere in the region. On this map, uh every dot represents fifty people. Green are places where you see an increase in access, brown is a decrease in access. And the darker the color, the greater the change. And so let's zoom in, the the, alright, so in some places you see green in the ridership concept compared to existing. In here, all of the green in are places where people see an increase in in the jobs that they can reach. There's a lot of green, there is some brown in places where we remove service. But if you count up all the gains and losses and you average it out, the average resident can reach twenty-three percent more jobs in the ridership concept because of the increasing frequency, people can reach more jobs in forty-five minutes. If we zoom in on Clive, we can see that there is also a lot of green along here. And a lot of that green uh is pretty dark green. If we average it out for the average resident in Clive, we can count up that the average resident can reach eighty-three percent more jobs in those forty-five minutes. That's because of the increasing frequency, because we now have fifteen-minute service going to Valley West Mall, because we have thirty-minute service on eighty-six, then people don't have to wait a long time for a bus, so they can travel really far in those forty-five minutes. So the average resident in Clive will be able to reach eighty-three percent more jobs in the ridership concept. In the coverage concept, the big picture looks like this. There is a lot of brown because we decreased the frequency. And when you decrease the frequency, people wait a longer time, so they can't travel as far. They can't reach as many jobs as today. If we average this out throughout the region, the average resident can reach nine percent less jobs. There are some gains, there's some losses, nine percent less on average. We can zoom in on Clive and in Clive, we see that there is uh some green in the places where we have that microtransit soon. But there's also a lot of brown in the places near university because we decreased the frequency there. And if we average it out for the average resident based on where they live and the access that they have, the average resident in Clive in the coverage concept will see a decrease of six percent jobs that they can reach in those forty-five minutes. So that's one way to compare these two networks. We can compare just the access that the average resident has. But another way is to look at just how many people are close to transit. So let's take a look at what it's like in Clive specifically. Today, you don't have any fifteen-minute service. Uh, there's some thirty-minute service or twenty-minute service that you have, so thirty minutes or better. That's three percent of residents in Clive. Close to any service is ten percent of residents. In the ridership concept, because we have higher frequencies, there is four percent of residents that are close to fifteen fifteen-minute service, twenty-three percent of residents that are close to thirty-minute service. So that's a big improvement over today. If you look at the coverage concept, we decrease the frequencies, so no one is close to fifteen-minute service or thirty-minute service. But with that microtransit service and the sixty-minute route, there is forty percent of residents in Clive that are close to any transit service. And so that's the trade-off between ridership and coverage. In coverage, you're reaching more people total, more people will have some service, but it is limited service. In the ridership concept, you reach less people total, but it is more frequent and more useful for them. So it depends on what you value.
Ricky, with with the microtransit though, and I think Ted made this point earlier, you can schedule that, right? That would be the idea is you could, you could say, okay, yeah, it's gonna be an hour wait, but I'm gonna, like, it's kind of like when I order pizza, right? I order an hour.
Yeah. That's a good point. So let me, let me explain frequency a little bit because frequency is something that's a little hard to explain to um to people that don't experience it in their day-to-day life. If if someone needs to be at a specific place at a specific time, let's say that someone might need to uh clock in at McDonald's at nine in the morning. A bus or whatever you're able to schedule a microtransit might be able to get you there at eight-twenty or nine-twenty if you might have to wait an hour. That means that a person that relies on service that is not very frequent would need to make a decision on being to going to work either forty minutes early or twenty minutes late. So they might not have to wait at a bus stop. They can wait at home, but they still have to be at a specific location at a specific time. And having lower frequency means that they're waiting somewhere. It might be at home, it might be at their destination, but it doesn't give people the freedom of being able to go where they go. And so that's the limitation between these two. And that's why in the coverage concept, there are a lot of people that are close to any service. It's just not frequent service. And if that's the goal, that's completely fine. I am not advocating for either one of these. I don't have a preference between them. Dart doesn't have a preference between them. There is a trade-off on values in the coverage concept, reaching a lot of people.
In the example you're just giving, like that, that person that needs to clock in for work or get to a doctor's appointment on time, whatever it is. With the microtransit though, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the microtransit concept that you're proposing. So let's say I'm that person and I need to be there at nine o'clock, right? Can I schedule my ride to pick me up at eight-thirty or eight-twenty or how how does that work? Can you run me through that scenario? Like, do I have to pick it at eight o'clock so that I'm dropped off at eight-twenty?
So there can be. Yeah, you would, you would either call or use an app to schedule a trip. You can do that uh when you need a trip. And depending on how many people have called, how many, how many trips trips are scheduled, then they're gonna try to make it work as best that it can for you and your situation. Um, but it is sometimes called on-demand service because of that. It's just whenever you call, whenever you need it, it can be scheduled as it can be. So you can imagine that service as being something like if no one has scheduled a ride, you might get someone to pick you up in ten minutes. But you might also have to wait an hour. So there's a lot of uncertainty as to how the response time can be. It depends on a lot of factor. And because of that limitation of how many people you can move in an hour that I was mentioning before, that limits a lot of that response time. If a lot of people are calling, there's, there's only so much that you can do with the vehicles that you have. So that's why I say that it's limited service.
Yeah, and I I know we're getting into really muddy waters with like conjecture here, but like presumably the app would show you like, you know, as some, yeah, like, you know, you you've got a, you've got four other people, maybe it's not the number, but like you've got a sixty-minute wait ahead of you, right, versus there's nobody in front of you, so it's ten minutes, right? Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Potentially.
See here, twenty minutes.
Yeah, and there's one of the other things to consider in the zone that we're seeing in Ankeny as we're testing it is um is the more people that want it, you have to put more buses on the road to meet that need. So we have a trip denial rate right now somewhere in like the thirty to forty percent where people want a ride and there's not a driver available. And we've actually had riders asking us to add more service, but we don't have the budget to add more service. So there is that limitation. Yes, we have to, unfortunately. It is based on availability.
But what was the ridership in Ankeny prior to on-demand versus now?
Prior to on, the on-demand, it's grown the ridership after the pandemic, yeah.
That's the point, right? I mean, whether after pandemic or before pandemic, if you can order a ride, you're gonna have a lot more people riding than you are if you can't. And so if the.
But I think.
But you can still, it's it's gonna cost more because we can, because our cost is the number of people we can carry an hour. And so it costs more per person.
Sure, but I'll pay more. And you might get me as a rider now where I wasn't before. And so to me, making this decision on what model I see coverage like Ted does for sure, but numbers are going to dictate this. And without the numbers, we can say you can reach a hundred thousand new jobs. But if people aren't riding the bus, it doesn't matter how many jobs you can reach or how many destinations like Valley West Mall, which I don't know who's going to Valley West Mall, but it's a crazy destination. Uh, I used it to walk in this winter, but uh only the valley would let me do it in their track. They wouldn't. But but the point being is, you know, uh, I I think numbers matter. And so if we're if we're solving for today's numbers, that's different than solving for future. Once you give the ability to on-demand, heck, you're gonna have twice as many riders in Clive, right? And now I'll pay more because I can get to my doctor's appointment. I can sit on my couch, watch for the car to drive up, or I'll watch my app like Uber. And I know it's in front of my house and I get in and I'm gone. I guess those numbers all matter. The numbers of how many, how many people it can touch and how many people our jobs it can get to don't really matter to me yet because we've had a very robust bus system, I think we'd all agree, for years, right? Routes and all that. And the numbers aren't there. They're minimal. So building around that concept, I think, is to me counterintuitive.
And I I think it also depends if we're looking just specifically at Clive or if we're looking at the region.
I think the region, I mean, being on Dart for ten years, I think I would go out and say it's the same for reach. Sure, Des Moines is gonna be proportionally higher and all that, but proportionally equally proportionally higher by population, but dismal ridership. And dismal ridership in Johnston, dismal ridership in Urban, you know, dismal ridership in Al- in Altoona. The numbers don't lie, right? But by putting these numbers up of twenty thousand new jobs that we can touch, if nobody will ride it, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, and that's where I think sometimes our experience um versus what, you know, we hear from riders and what we've seen in other cities is that the biggest thing that drives that ridership is frequency because it's just like if you're brought, I'm just saying that's what that's shown in other cities. You don't have to agree with it.
Frequency. I've ridden the bus, right? I I took that challenge and rode the bus a couple of times. Totally find out it drops me off at Civic Center and now I'm walking to East Village in a snowstorm. That was literal story, right? And waiting for the bus. Frequency isn't gonna get more riders. Convenience will get more riders, right? Convenience picking me up at my door and all. Anyways, we're going too far into.
And that's exactly why, you know, we're taking this to you guys for for the feedback and I and the public and I'd say right um right now so far on the feedback we've heard from the public, it's about evenly split between what people want. So I completely understand.
That surprises me because I I would think, and and no offense to Ricky and how he's presenting this, but the ridership concept is is, in my opinion, misleading the way it's presented and 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 how it's going to be more convenient because it is more frequent. And when people think about riding the bus, they don't want to go and stand at a bus stop for twenty minutes or forty-five minutes or or what have you. But I don't think they're really getting a a good, solid alternative to that, at least not the way this is presented. This is the second time I've seen it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I I'm I'm concerned. Me. Just told, I I don't like either option, I'll be honest. Um, I I think there's a blend in there somewhere where I, I think there's a blend in there somewhere, where. The, the ridership can work for the city of Des Moines. And then the suburbs need more of the micro transit.
That's exactly what we're asking right now. So the commission will not be voting on just one or the other. It's somewhere on a spectrum, and that's why we're also asking each member community what they want, so that when we go to that design of that plan. We can hopefully find that right ballots.
What Mike is saying is exactly right. It, that convenience, that, that Uber style, however you wanna frame it, um, it. It's some level of the micro transit, but I don't think that's exactly right either. Um, is what's gonna get you the ridership. At, at least in the suburbs, I'm not talking about.
Well, that's twenty total, like, that's what it counts, two per day, so when you look at unique riders, probably ten new riders.
Your honor, if I could ask a question, one, one thing that I know is, was talked about very early on in this process was. How, how we get the, the transit system to the riders for the folks that needed the most. In terms of acts that level, that portion of access. Right? And. How, Ricky, I'm just kind of curious, I know that's probably a hard, you can't just figure that out, right, in terms of data analysis, but maybe you can. Is how does that factor in? In terms of these different models, whether it's ridership or coverage, in terms of. Getting at those, of those riders that might not have as much choice, that are more reliant upon the transit system versus those that might have the. The choice side of it. I know that's a big discussion really early on. It seemed like there was. Fairly broad consensus amongst the commission that we wanna focus on those no choice riders first. And then the choice riders, if it, if it fits within the budget and the system, makes sense. So how does that fit in with these two concepts?
Sure. So we actually did look at this and similar analysis for low income residents. Um, when we think about the spectrum between choice writers and dependent writers. We don't like to make that distinction because it is a spectrum and someone, everybody's somewhere along there. There might be low income people that. Might get a ride from a car because the system isn't doing what they need, or there might be people that can afford a car, but they don't. Just don't wanna drive. So there's people all over the spectrum, but if we wanna think about people that are likely to have a bigger need for transit, then we can think about low income people. And if we look at low income people um, throughout the region and in Clive, we see a similar trend to this. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we did look at it, and I saw that it is something very similar to this, where in the ridership concept. We're reaching more of those low income residents with that frequent service. And in the coverage concept, we're reaching more total. But not with the frequent service. And low income people are especially sensitive to frequency. Because a lot of times they have two jobs and they don't have a lot of time to be traveling throughout the day. And so the frequency just means that they can actually move a lot faster. And they can get to the jobs that they need and get to the doctor's appointment and destinations that they need. So.
Sorry, I, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, but so just fundamentally, I'm having a hard time following that reasoning because. So in both of these concepts, the ridership and the coverage one. Neither one of them has to stop at one fifty-six at Hickman anymore. Right? So how is it, how is it enabling those people that live in Dallas County Clive? To get, you know, anywhere. I don't care if the bus runs every five minutes, it could run every minute, it doesn't matter. They have to walk five miles. Or whatever it is to get to a bus stop. That's not. That's, that's a nonstarter. Right? I mean, if you're.
Yeah, and so. No, that's a, that's a great point. And something that I'll say is that the region in general has grown a lot in the last twenty years. And in those twenty years, Dart has only grown one percent. And so the reason why there isn't, there wouldn't be a lot of service going to a lot of those new places in Dallas County. Is just uh, because the system hasn't grown in proportion to population.
So, that's why we have to reimagine.
You run out of money.
No, and, and I, and I, I get that, it's just, it, it seems like. It seems like we're making assumptions here without, like, I, I hate to say I agree with Mike, but. But we, we don't really have the numbers to, to go with that, to say like, okay, how many people? From Clive, for example, just going back to what I was just saying, right? Like, how many of those? Ten or fifteen or twenty, I know we don't have exact numbers, but how many of those people are actually coming from the Dallas County? Right? That, that are no longer gonna have any service. On either of these proposals. I mean, I don't know that number, but it'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Uh, and so that's why I wanted, like, we may be, we may be increasing ridership or coverage, we may be increasing access for some folks, but. Let's keep in mind the people that we're taking access away from. And what effect does that have? Like, I, I know it's, it's, you know. We're not gonna solve everybody's problems and there's gonna be hard decisions to make, but. Let's keep in mind.
It's a good comment. We'll keep that in mind when we look at uh, when we look into the draft plan, we'll keep those people in mind. So, let's see. So like Amanda was saying, um. We're having a public engagement phase right now where we're asking the public what they think between these two concepts. And so throughout the month of April, up until April thirtieth, we're asking the people where they land between ridership and coverage. Looking at these options, do they strongly prefer ridership, strongly coverage, lean towards either one, or are they halfway in between? And so what's next is that the, the um, the survey closes on April thirtieth. We'll summarize the results and have those in early May. And there is a. Meeting on May sixth, May sixth, when we wanna hear from each member community on where their community lands. Because it doesn't necessarily have to be the same for the entire region. Uh, this can be mixed and matched between the different communities if there's different values in different places. And so in May sixth, we'll wanna hear sort of where they, where they, where they think they'll lean. But then on May nineteenth, we want direction from the commission, because that same week, we're gonna be designing the draft network based on the direction that we hear.
So this poll is just like one data point for the commission to take into consideration. It's not decisive.
No, no.
I, 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 I will continue to say, I, I, I would be shocked if, like, the majority of the public. Doesn't automatically go to the ridership, right? I mean, I just.
I would, I would also say that you'd be surprised. I, I have done this similar approach in many different cities, and I have seen different communities lean towards each one. Uh, I did a project in Knoxville, Tennessee that was implemented last August, where they leaned pretty heavily towards ridership. And in leaning towards ridership, they got rid of service in some places and. Uh, increased frequency in others, and that's what they did, they implemented it. And I've also been working on a project in St. Petersburg, Florida that was approved two weeks ago, where they didn't wanna get rid of any of their coverage, so they. They did some network improvements, but both without leaving anybody behind that has service today. And so different communities end up landing in different places on the spectrum, and that's why it's important to have the conversation. And to ask people what their values are, and that's why we're going through this exercise.
So Ricky, that, this may be, I don't know, maybe this is a question for you, Amanda, or anything, but. And, and it's, it's, it's gonna be an extreme example, but. What, what would we be looking at, like, from a budget deficit essentially? Like, how much in the hole are we getting ourselves into? If we were to say. Is part of my problem with this, it's. Right? Like, there, there's not really, we have a density problem when you get past the one. Just put it once, right? And so. How much of a hole are we digging if we were to come up with a concept? That was all micro transit. Except for. Like the, kinda like. Yeah, the red area that is in the coverage concept, right? Like something like that, where you have enough density to support. That fixed route, big bus, running all the time. Like, how, how are we just? Is that quadruple?
We, we'd have to run the numbers. I mean, it, it depends too there, what you're thinking, cuz like right now. Can we have people who we can't serve in Ankeny? So do we keep putting buses on as long as people serve? That number is just gonna keep growing, but is that what we want?
But I think, I think that gives the city an option to say, okay, Ankeny, you have thirty percent of rides that were having to decline.
Yeah.
Do you wanna pay more so those residents can ride, or do you wanna just keep it where it's at?
Yep.
Yeah, I, cuz I, I know I would like to know. What those options look like, what the costs look like. Again, to me, these two concepts are ma- main. Primarily just tweaking. What we're doing currently. It's not, and again, in my mind, a true reimagining of how we do Dart. To do that is exactly what Shrikanth just said, in my opinion, and I would like to know what those costs are, and I'd also think. That people would be willing to pay more, like Mike was saying, for that type of convenience.
And to be clear, we don't know what that number is, right? Like, that's what I was just asking.
But, but having that as an option to look at would be important.
And here's the other thing I'm thinking about, right? Like, we, we've always talked about. Getting all of these different communities that are made up of different densities, different population types, different industries. How do you get them all to the table to agree on the funding formula or whatever, right? Part of this, to me. But, but you know, I think. The scenario. And I'm sure it will get murkier than what we're describing here theoretically, but. You know, that thirty percent decline rate in Ankeny, for example. That's an Ankeny problem to solve. They either fund it or they don't. Right? It's not Clive that's gonna come in and say, oh, Ankeny, we'll pay for your rides, right? And conversely, they're not. Right? So if we were on the micro transit program and. Our decline rate was thirty percent, then we have to make a decision with the council. Are we gonna pay more to fund Dart to fill that gap? Or are we gonna tell the residents like, hey, we can't do that right now? Or we'll look at it next year, or maybe we do something. Right? That's a decision. The council.
But you might actually not look at it as a deficit, you might look at it as an opportunity. Uber's not losing.
But the, I mean, they're charging a lot more.
Sure, but where is that in between number? I'll pay, right? And so how many people?
I'm paying fifty bucks to get to the airport.
Right, I'll take it for forty.
I'll do it for forty.
But, but how many people, what would the growth be? We asked to be in the micro transit on demand. And, and still welcome in today, but. They, you know, you may have an increase in the number, where you have ten people riding today.
Yeah, the convenience.
You might end up, the, the revenue may come in stronger than. Depending on your revenue model and. If you charge me versus someone that. Needs.
One thing I would, again, uh, one thing I would ask the, you know, have the council think about, cuz I've been sitting through a lot of these presentations over the last six months. And, yeah. And, you know, when we think about. You know, the middle of these, these uh, concepts, right? I could envision particularly for our community where we have, to your density comment, uh, Shrikanth is. You know, we have that tighter density and, and, you know, low, uh, uh, more no choice riders on that eastern part of our community, right? Uh, and so you might have a, a situation where there might be a frequent route. On the ridership concept through that part of the community. Where then in other parts of the community, you have the coverage piece, right? That's a little bit of the coverage model, except it's, you know, it's a less. Frequent route, right? So if you're smashing them together. There could be. You know, where you're in the middle, where you're getting a little bit of both. That is still within the same budget parameters that you might see a lot, number of other suburbs that would make a similar choice. Particularly because Urbandale, West Des Moines and us. Kinda have our densities, and West Des Moines is a little different because they have a different density around Jordan Creek. Uh, that they've built over the years, but we, how we grew, we have more of our, our density is on the eastern sides of our community. And then we get more spread out, just how we develop.
I actually made a comment to Ted, cuz on one of the maps that Ricky was showing. The density. Or, or not density, the, the coverage concept actually had more green on it on the east side of the city. With that micro transit. Right? Like, the, the university got more brown, right? The main fixed route. Yeah, right, right. But, but the, the east side of the city actually had more green because of that micro transmit. Concept. I, Ricky, I don't know if you have that slide. Easily available.
Yes. Do you mean this here?
Yeah, that's the one. Yeah, like, I mean, you see the, the amount of, I mean, it's light green, but still green.
Right, and, yep, and that's what happens in the coverage concept in this era with micro transit service. It's uh, better than not having anything, so it is gonna be an improvement, uh, but it's gonna be light green. If you look at, uh, what I was saying in the ridership concept, the area along E six on the east. Is darker green because of that frequent. That's how that's.
You lot, you lose a lot of the green right above Valley West.
You do. In the coverage concept, there is also brown along university.
One other clarifying question by my, uh. These, these solutions or these options don't exist sort of in, in a, in a fact, you know. There's private sector. Transportation options as well. I didn't know if, in the course of this or looking at other communities as you think about that micro transit solution. What is it, what is the effect on, of it on the private sector, right, vice versa as well? Do you see some sort of a relationship between?
Yeah, I, I mean, in terms of who's delivering the service, right? And that's where one of the next steps um, in this, after we choose what the goals are, is. Looking at that, are there other models in terms of where can a private serve it better than us and where can't they? Um, so we are planning to look at and assess that. We are using uh, third parties right now for uh, our overflow on paratransit. Um, and so we work with a company called YouServe and we work with Yellow Taxi for, for those, so we. Are looking at that, I'd say most places, uh. If they have a private model, it's usually a large contracted service that like runs transit. Transit service. We haven't found like too many small private models that. Uh, cuz there isn't money to be made in it, it doesn't usually end up, uh, end up working.
Amanda. Part of the challenges that I, I know I've. Seen with, where trying to partner with Dart is that, um, the private entity or the, the five oh one C three. Um, is actually cross purposes with, with you, you, you guys and your funding formula, right? Because. You're paid by ridership, right? And so if, if the partner is actually taking riders from you, you're losing funding from that. Is that not accurate?
You mean, like a, like a job rise nonprofit?
Right.
Um, I don't, I, again, if someone can do something. Public transit is at its core, public and infrastructure and subsidized. If someone can do it without that. That's great, like, we, you know, we invite that, I don't.
Is there a way to not plug them? Because no matter what we do, there's gonna be gaps in your service, right? I mean, and there, there's no way around that. And some of that's funding related, of course, so to try to plug those gaps with maybe a partnership with a nonprofit. Um. Again, but, but the problem is that you're cross purposes with the, the funding formula, I think.
I don't think it's that we're at cro- cross purposes. We actually did try to work with JobRise, we actually ran into some of the challenges we run into as regulation. Which, you know, we might be in an environment where that changes, but um, insurance capability for who's driving the vehicle is one of the. Big things where we got stuck on that, but we are looking at how we can use our vans and our van pooling models. Create that, filling the gaps for those other po- for populations that aren't served in this as well, and so that is something we're looking at. Um, you know, we have found, just, we haven't found a nonprofit that was able to sustain it, because it is, usually the costs end up outweighing. The revenue, so they end up with the challenge. I'd rather work with someone. Um, we were trying with JobRise, we just weren't able to get over that insurance hurdle that we could. For those reasons.
Matt, can I put you on the spot for a school district? You know, you know, numbers of. School, uh, West Des Moines school kids that are taking Dart. Yeah.
I, I don't, it's mi- minimal.
Yeah, it's minimal. We don't have enough robust service that it's meeting the needs of those students. I know, we do get some.
We, we do.
Look, if I'm in, if I'm in uh, high school and I can call uh, uh, on demand. Come pick me up, take me to the pool in the summer. Take me over to the Jordan Creek, or take me to school every morning. And I'd be all over it.
Yeah, it's funny, the Ankeny City Council actually asked us, like, they don't want us to be serving their students. Uh, cuz it's, that's not who their goal is in terms of the population. So again, it does come back to what are we trying to s-. What are we trying to serve? Do you want us to look at numbers that if we were to increase that micro transit availability? What would that cost us? Is that something you're interested in?
I think so, yeah, I think it'd be helpful, I mean. We wanna put the money up for it. Like, you know, it's a, that, that's a win-win in my mind.
And what that basic coverage is being presented side is. The coverage on demand. Would be no additional ones.
Correct, that's a status quo network, yeah. So that's status quo in terms of budget.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, which is a pretty good, I think.
Right, it's if we wanna go further than that, or we want more buses, or, you know, more vans, or more, you know, whatever it is, right?
But I think you, yeah, I like that number, but you grow into that, right?
Right, yeah.
That's something you're thinking about, Amanda, in terms of. The co- like certain communities, they lean towards the coverage model of having. Option, you know, optional expansion zone. Option, you know, optional expansion zones of that coverage model. I'm just thinking of like how you. The cost of entry to spin that up versus a fixed route is probably quite a bit less. Still got the cost of the driver, the cost of the vehicle, but in terms of growing into it, right? In the future where you might start out a place and then if the community. You know, the the council and the commissioner comes to Dart and says, hey, charge me more because I want our specific levy rate. To pay for more coverage because of a cer- a specific need of that community. We haven't really thought about that too much in the commission model today.
No, we haven't in the model today, but it is something, and I know you and I have talked about before, but yeah, that we could look at. And again, it depends on the community, but. I said that because I know Urbandale's in the same spot. We're willing to do more service if a community is able to pay for it. We're willing, willing to do that.
So part, part of what I'm thinking about with this is, you know, you, you have businesses that present themselves as. For lack of a better phrase, eat what you kill, right? This is more of a pay what you use. Thanks, right? So you, you keep your fixed overhead presumably. More at scale because you've got more communities together than if we were all to run, like if we were to run our own microtransit. There's gonna be a level of fixed cost there. Plus, you know, Dart has the expertise in transit. So it's win-win. That's, that's what I'm kind of thinking of. How do we keep the overhead low? But still allow the cities to make choices and pay for those choices, right? If it's, if if Clive wants every nook and cranny covered, they gotta pay for it.
Council, I just also wanna go back to an earlier slide to make sure that we're asking for the complete set of information that you all want to make comparison. The maps that we've been considering presume current funding level. But there were those two other options, or then the, the fourth, which would be dramatically different. I presume then when you say you wanna see what the cost is of expanded microtransit. You wanna see that it's cost in the scenario where there's current funding, slightly less funding, less funding, and then, oh goodness, forty percent cut.
Yeah, and I'd say at this point, just given time reality, we're not gonna be able to run all of those scenarios. I think it'll be where do we land in the budget in May? And then what can we grow if the legislature allows us to? Right? Like right now, the way the bill is written, we wouldn't be able to grow service unless we wanted to pay out a general fund. Um, so but I, what I would say is we can. Yeah, we wanna know where the community is leaning, leaning, focus on that, focus on the budget decision. And then as we're working on the draft plan, we can talk about how we could scale it up for communities that want that. Um, and if we're at that point, we know we're at a smaller budget, then we'll be working on the plan, draft plan that has that smaller budget. And then we can talk about what the options are to increase.
Pete, that's a good point. I mean, part of what I'm thinking there, and this is my thoughts, by the way, like if, if, if we end up with that, just. Flash and cut budget, then it means we start small, right? Like we start in a smaller area. Rather than having, you know, I'm making this up, but instead of having like half of five covered microtransit. Maybe it's only a quarter and then we gotta, you know, we gotta grow into it.
Feedback.
Ricky, any final thoughts, Boris?
I would say that this conversation right now has been great. This is what we wanna hear. So I'm really glad that you all are debating this. I'm glad that you all have been engaged. Thank you for staying engaged and remember that uh, we wanna think about the goals. And that um. The amount of service, if you wanna, if you wanna fund more service, that can definitely be done. Uh, but for now, we're thinking about the, the goals associated with transit in the future. So, yeah. This has been a good conversation. Thank you.
Just thank you for the time and conversation and know, you know, we're, we're taking that feedback, we're, we're hearing it and appreciate that and. Um, and I really hear you guys saying coverage is likely where you feel your community is um, leaning at this point and. We'll certainly be sharing those survey results with our commissioners and alternates um, as soon as we get those in as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, we have correspondence. Do we have any, Matthew? No correspondence, then we'll move on to reports, starting with. Shrikan for your final report.
Uh, no report, but I'll.
Perfect. Thank you, Nick.
I was gonna make it short and sweet, but. No, I just, I, I will keep it short and sweet, but I, I, I just wanted to say it's been an honor to serve and. I think it's, I, I've learned a ton. Hopefully, I've, I've contributed to the community to make it better. Um, but, but yeah, like I said, it, it has been an honor and it's something I'm gonna miss, something I'll, I will definitely come back and visit. As I've joked before, I won't be the last council meeting. It may be the last full council.
You will be missed.
Well, uh, to make it formal, Shrikan, we have a certificate of appreciation.
Why don't we take this one in front of the flags? Doug, sure, sure. I park it down over there.
Hey, what do you have?
I have no report tonight.
Eric.
Uh, no report. I just want to say one thing. The mayor and I uh, did attend a celebration night for. A former Clive City Councilman and a former Clive Police Chief John Schifer. And uh, you know, John really did a lot for the community for a very, very long career. Just wanna recognize him for his long time service and devotion, uh, Clive. And uh, just keep him and his family.
Thanks, Eric. Susan.
Nothing tonight.
Michael.
One comment uh, about the Cloud Chamber. I attended an event that Christie had invited me to, or the emerging leaders, uh, please. And she has great numbers on that uh, uh, in that class first this year. And very engaged to react. And uh. The new site, we're big brothers, big sisters, uh, on grand. I joked with them that I was. I wasn't, but I said I was a little bit late because I went to the one in Clive, because who would move Clive? The right minds and this was a beautiful building down. Grand, yeah, uh. The void, so it was, was really nice to go to be at that event and I think you're about twenty, that's what I'm saying. Christie did a really, really nice job putting that event on, but that's all.
Very good. Anything else? Anything legal?
Record your honor. Your honor, it's tonight, uh, your honor. Appreciate our last couple of weeks, uh, took advantage of training opportunities at a couple of different conferences. Took back a, a number of, of good ideas, particularly things that we're gonna be. Probably need to think about as an organization going forward with uh, uh, quite a bit of fiscal uncertainty and thinking differently about service delivery models and. Uh, just a lot of good ideas that will be, uh, I'll be probably testing out with some of you in the future. Uh, so that was some great opportunities, particularly the one in Milwaukee last week, really, really good. And talked a little bit about AI, which you know, we'll. Lose our AI champion on the, on the council for now, but uh, some really interesting things that some cities are doing. Uh, particularly on the internal kind of process improvement and efficiency of staff and. Internal virtual assistants and just really fascinating things that some cities not far apart from us are doing. Uh, just uh, just a little bit north of here. So. Um, also wanted to mention, I wanted to ask the council as we, as you go into your process uh, on May first. Uh, we're uh, receiving council candidate uh, applications for the vacancy. Uh, one thing is, I know typical the council's process has been at a May first meeting will be an interview process. One thing I wanted to ask is in terms of as we receive those candidates, we've seen two so far, we've got two weeks to go before the deadline. Is whether or not um, the council would wanna have maybe some questions. Kind of standard questions that you would want every candidate to be prepared to answer, maybe on their opening statement. To share with them ahead of the council meeting. I know you all have your own questions to ask them custom depending on their background in here. And their interest in the community, but we're just kind of thinking, we're putting together the, the council member guidelines, the new elected official guidelines that. You all have seen before, she counts gone through the whole process before. We're updating that currently. We're planning on sharing that with any of the candidates so they can get a good background. I don't expect them to read all of it, because it's quite a bit of material. But at least to give them an opportunity to get a good background, but we also thought it might be beneficial to. Give them maybe some standard questions, you know, um, and I would maybe draft a few for your reaction. Just to give it to them ahead of time and say, hey, when you come to the interview process, be prepared to answer these. There'll be a number of additional questions beyond that. Just wanted to test that with the council, if that's something that you'd be interested in, a little different from previous process with something that we. That we have a little bit more lead time here, we could uh, develop that and have that ready for any of those candidates. Some thoughts and reactions to that, council?
It's a good idea.
So I can. Clip some of my weekly update, react to it. It'd be just standard questions of why are you interested in the? Position, what are specific background, community, those kinds of things. It'll be just like three or four.
Encourage them to read the whole thing. Reading those gets you lighter.
Last thing I have, your honor, is just a legislative update, uh, as you probably have heard, and I'll share more information. Borrow on new property tax bill dropped yesterday. This is, uh, instead of amending, the first property tax bill that was introduced this session. Uh, the Ways and Means Chair in the House and Senate decided to basically rewrite the bill. It has some of the similar elements to the first bill, but it's definitely shows that they are taking feedback. Because they have made some adjustments based on feedback they've been hearing from cities, from us. And school districts and, and other stakeholders. There is not a fix uh, at this point, some of our concerns with. Taxicab and financing and what that looks like in terms of some of these economic development deals that have been done. Uh, that are existing and what that looks like in the future. This still has created some challenges for TIF as a tool, state of Iowa. But there is definitely some adjustments that have been being uh, in potential and they've been clear. These legislators have been clear to the Iowa League of Cities lobbyists and others that there is still opportunities for. Uh, it's not a fine deal in terms of the way this uh, bill was introduced. So uh, the model that uh, public uh. Public financial management has developed in the early cities that was distributed in all cities. Uh, we had just gotten, they had just gotten it done for the first bill. But thankfully, the framework is already there, as well having just more tweaks than wholesale changes. Uh, they're spinning up the model to uh, correspond to this new bill and show those impacts. I'll share those with you all. Uh, we have, we had it ready to go of the previous bill, so. Uh, that's kind of a good point now, but we'll spin it up. We've been doing some stuff internally too to look at it. For Clive, we're kind of in this unique spot with the, the hard caps. Uh, the two percent cap allowing for new growth to be considered outside of the caps. We were kind of in the middle, uh, where the existing framework and the new frameworks were about the same for us. But I think the loss of the TIF tool going forward and these new, these new bills is, is definitely a challenging problem. Um, again, that could be replaced by a different tool, but I don't, haven't heard a whole lot of conversation about that at this point. Um, so we'll see um, how much uh, session we also have left, probably, I mean, it's all have a bunch to go through, you're probably bumping away. Uh, but we'll see. One thing I will also mention is, um, there was a bill that was passed this week. From the Senate and House, it was actually the House that's the last passing. And I think, I believe Doug talked about this a little bit at the end of your previous meeting on recovery and accessory development. So it's pretty well certain the governor's gonna sign it. There will be some state codification. On how communities can regulate accessory dwelling units. About the information, uh, to the development staff, they're aware of that. They were about ready to bring that discussion to you. In terms of the policy questions, that is getting. Um, maybe not completely reformatted, but adjusted based on these new regulations that are gonna be codified in state code and this is. One of the first times that we're really having uh, the state 입입 into land use uh, regulation. Um, so this is uh, seems like this is gonna be signed. So that was passed this week down the house. So more to come on that in terms of future compensation, I like we've explained there, so uh, with you all on accessory dwelling units, which was the top priority. Your strategic plan in terms of adopting the ordinance.
So a little bit of home rule taken away.
Right.
Next, what are they gonna do? Tell them, tell them, teach our kids.
Fireworks. Matt, Matt's picking about home rule being degraded. Could you mention fireworks, the mayor said, and what some of the changes they're looking at with that, with that son of a.
There is a, there is a, another fireworks bill this year, uh, getting mixed messages on whether it's gonna move forward through both chambers. But it basically would eliminate any uh, uh, local government's ability to, to ban. Firing off of fireworks on July third, July fourth, September thirty first to January first. So currently, City of Five has a prohibition. You can obviously purchase fireworks uh, at certain uh, locations in our community. Uh, but we have a prohibition against shooting off fireworks uh. Uh, during the entire year, uh, that this would be preempting that. So, yeah, getting, not sure when that bill's gonna make it through, but that bill is still alive, uh, like a bill at this point. And then also, uh, finally, uh, an interesting pill that had a pretty substantial amendment to it. Uh, interesting concept of um, having the fire marshal. State Fire Marshal look at, leading an effort of exploring collaborations amongst uh, consolidation amongst fire agencies across the state. Um, I think from a local government perspective, there was welcoming that discussion of what that looks like statewide. An amendment was added to restrict that review to just the four most populous counties in the state. Which I think changes things quite a bit. So I don't know if that's gonna be a bill that's gonna make it all the way through. I wanted to make the uh, council where, again, as we've talked about this chamber and will be coming before you here in the near future, the. Finalization of those uh, Urbandale, uh, entirety of those collaborations. And we're already doing a lot of that in these most populous counties. Um, I think there's a lot more struggles for Ohio. Some fire database coverage. So yeah, I don't know if that bill's gonna make it through, but it definitely lost some of its strength. Those are just some items that I wanted to mention to your honor in terms of where we're at with legislation right now.
Any further questions for Matt? Matt, uh, and I attended my log last night where we heard a presentation on. I don't know if you wanna elaborate at all on what some of the more effective strategies are for communicating with. The legislators and who effectively would do that, particularly those who would be impacted. Uh, by some of the changes in the legislation. Particularly TIF.
Yeah, yeah. One thing that the league is, is uh. Trying to educate the legislators on these tip stories in terms of where tax agreement financing really made a difference to make a deal happen. And what are the impacts potentially of, again, even though the property tax legislation doesn't speak to tax agreement financing in the bill. Because of this most recent bill that was introduced yesterday takes the residential rollback forty seven percent to a hundred percent in a year. Now, when you do that and you're like for Clive, for example, you're doubling a residential tax base one year. That drives the tax rate down by half probably in the general fund. All of our tax agreement financing deals are based on a TIF tax rate that was estimated at the time those deals were signed. So that tax rate against the increment, the new value that's generated from that economic development project. Pays the debt off, whatever the debt may be, whether it's an incentive or infrastructure. If you have that TIF tax rate, now you're not generating as much revenue. You gotta make that up some way somehow. Now the value might be going up. Because the commercial rollback would also go up to a hundred percent. Most of tax agreement financing deals for the most part are based on commercial properties, industrial properties. There is some residential throughout the state, but most of them are commercial industrial. But if your commercial industrial valuation is going from, it's currently taxed at ninety percent of its assessed value to a hundred percent. And that's not gonna make up for the tip tax rate dropping that fast. So there's gonna be potential for gaps in financing of these deals. That could, that, for example, for us, you know, we have a couple. Uh, items that we're, we're reviewing it, we're having, having PFM take a look at our. Uh, TIF cash flow to see what the impacts would be for us. Uh, we have much less of that TIF debt than some other communities in Iowa, especially in the metro area. Uh, so our, the impacts might be minimal, but the reality is, is any, any debt obligations that we've issued, any city has issued. That, that's tax, tax agreement financing, finance, they're paying that debt off. It doesn't matter that TIF revenue is not there. That debt is backed by the full faith and credit of the city. What that means is the city's, that debt payment would have to shift to debt service levy and all taxpayers in the city would have to pay for it. As we have an obligation to bondholders that say. Full faith and credits, so that any, there's that backstop is debt service levy. So that would shift, either debt service levy would have to go up to compensate for that, or you're cutting the CIP. Of projects that you would have done to make up for that. Of projects that you would have done to make up that debt service payment. So. That's what a lot of cities are doing some analysis on right now. I've been trying to tell that story of individual. Projects. I think there was a really good example from the mayor of Newt last night. Who was having a number of legislators come out to the Speedway next week. Talked about how that was taxing the fact that that would not have happened without taxing the financing. That more rural part of the state that had a huge economic development project. That is about, that that tip is about to value is about ready to be released too. And so that is a um, you know, one of those kind of storytelling pieces that the league is encouraging. And we're also engaging with professional developers in Iowa, greater my partnership. I'll share an email that I got from now. Uh Pete and I had a call with their lobbyists this morning. Um their development community is very active space right now too.
Thanks, Matt. Any uh anything else for the good of the order this evening?
There, if I, if I.
Yes, Pete.
Interstate closures or and lane closures and then next week a temporary closure of Colin Hickman Road. Uh all related to bridge work that's being done over Hickman. So there's going to be a lot of sort of dynamic closures of lanes, sometimes. Full closures and then the ramps later on this month and certain, uh particular areas from between Douglas and University. Getting closed at different times, so. I don't want to start saying northbound, southbound. It gets confusing very quickly when you start talking about all the ramps. We're going to have a link for you all to take a look at tomorrow. We've asked the DOT to make sure they keep their page updated, keep that pressure on them so that we can then. Consistently drive people once by, but there is going to be a lot of. Uh uh change and a lot of uh it's going to be very important that we're communicating that to people moving through the court.
Anything else, Pete?
Mayor's peanut is coming up. You all get a lot of questions about that, so we'll be ready to tell that story for the rest of this month, then write a bit today, but the peanut start.
Very good. Anything else that we need to cover this evening? Hearing none, well, we'll shriek on a safe trip and adjourn at eight thirty two.